All right. This is the Cohasset Select Board for Tuesday, February 7, 2023. We opened this meeting at 6:00 and then we went into an executive session. We have come out of executive session and we are now reopening, you know, the meeting. So first thing is the introduction of new employees. We also, we may have noticed there's a lot of blue in the room. We're going to have a very, very special series of presentations. First, we want to have some of the new employees and then we'll have presentations of the officers and all the great things that they have well-earned. Chris.
Good evening, everybody. And thank, uh, here we go. Okay. It's actually a great way to start the meeting tonight. We have some recognition of new employees, which will continue in three weeks. So I have three of our finance team today. And if I could have them all come up, I know, I'm sorry. So we have a brand-new finance director, a brand-new treasurer collector, and a brand-new assistant town accountant. It's been a busy, busy transition over the last couple of months. Oh, I guess you have behind me, huh? Okay. So Linda Cole is our new treasurer collector.
Hello.
Linda joins us after 21 years of service as an assistant treasurer in a nearby community of Halifax. She was in 2015 elected the executive board of the Plymouth County Collector and Treasure Association, and is our fun. So she's been awesome. She's been with us since October.
September.
September. Wow, I forgot I would miss the month. Doing great. Really settled in, and she's been a really great addition. She's added a little candy jar in front of the office so you can heal, treat, and you pay your bills. It's very good. A little fun fact about Linda is that she loves adventuring zip line. She has ziplined to New Hampshire, Mexico, Belize, Honduras, and is heading to Tennessee for her next adventure. So if I see a line coming out of the treasurer collector's office in the common, I'll know what's going on. So welcome, Linda.
Yeah, welcome.
Jennifer Muller is our new finance director. Jennifer joins us with, again, an equal, like, almost 25 or 30 years' experience. So I guess now in multiple communities, most recently in Falmouth, where she served as the finance director. She has been active in numerous and numerous numbers of projects, both capital and financial, all kinds of planning. She has served as a finance director since 2003 and has been in government since the '90s. Her fun fact, she's a CrossFit and mountain biking enthusiast. And I know that, I haven't seen either of those for sure, but she goes running every day. I don't know how she managed to do that. So welcome, Jennifer. And we also have another, another new addition. So Jennifer's partner every day is Diana Phillips. Diane has been in fiscal operations for over 20 years. She was an assistant town accountant in another South Shore community for a number of years. She has two tracks through being officially certified by the Massachusetts Auditors and Accountants Association and has gotten EMAS training, any of the school training. She's a wizard at software too, which is our program, which is great. And her little fun fact is she has, she has been a park interpreter, doing historic lectures and talks around the history of Plymouth and Plymouth Rock. Welcome. Our finances are well on hand. Again, thank you, Jennifer, Linda, and Diane. Welcome to Chris. Now, I have the privilege of turning the podium over. Chief William Quigley is going to be a special presence tonight, both recognizing two new sergeants and a number of awards for departmental members. Thank you, Chris.
Evening, everybody. Thank you for coming, family and friends on the board. This is a great occasion to recognize some outstanding work by a lot of our officers and also move some officers from patrol division up to supervisory positions. With that, I'd like to ask Officer Patrick Ritten to stand. And this is, you can jump front and center there, in the middle of everything that you love. You know, Pat is being promoted to the position of patrol sergeant. As everybody knows, he's, he's our canine officer. His faithful partner Einstein up here tonight, he's resting. Pat is, I think, Pat's wife Heather is going to pin his badge in. Is it just Heather? Is the whole group coming up? Just Heather? Okay, so I have a new sergeant's badge here. Patrick, let's get his new stripes on. Yeah. He's being transitioned from the Criminal Investigation Division into patrol division as a patrol sergeant. This is a big, a big, a big move for Harrison. He is, he's, he has been part, an integral part of our detective bureau for years. And pinning him tonight is going to be his soon wife-to-be, Lindsay. Hold up, Lindsay. New sergeant badge. Do not hurt yet.
Not like the "k" I do in the military.
Killer. Now, I asked that, Senator O'Connor was here tonight, I asked that he come up. He has some recognition from the state. We're privileged to have us, a senator, here tonight. And I think if Officer Ritten, Sergeant Ritten, Sergeant, she could, could hang out there for a minute, I'll turn it over to the senator.
Sure. First off, congratulations to the two officers being promoted here today and to all the officers getting recognition for everything you've done. So we have some recognition from the state. There's, there's quite a bit of it here, so I'm going to leave it with the chief. But we wanted to really recognize all the work that every officer has done, both you two being promoted, and the work that really went on during so many different critical incidents here in Cohasset. And just reading about them after Chief Quigley had sent them to us earlier this week, I felt it really our duty to go and get all of your names written to the record of the Massachusetts State Senate. So on Thursday, we start the session by doing the Pledge of Allegiance. We're in full formal session, so all 40 members of the Senate will be there. And then after that, we do a thing called Motion Orders and Resolutions. At that point in time, each one of your names, as well as your promotions, and each one of the work that all of you have done who were receiving awards later today, will be written to the record in the Massachusetts State Senate. You'll further be part of a history in the Commonwealth because you've obviously gone above and beyond in the work that you have completed. And I'm just so proud that the, the board has allowed me to be here today to, to recognize this honor and for them to have the, the presentation in front of the entire community, I think, is something important. Law enforcement and public safety is incredibly difficult work, and especially now, more so than ever before. And we want you to know the community is behind you and the Commonwealth is behind you, and we appreciate every single thing that you do day in and day out to keep us safe. So thank you very much and congratulations on the promotions, and thank you for all the hard work everyone's done. Thank you.
And I'd also like to introduce to the board Detective, new detective, Julie Hall, with Sergeant Schmidt's promotion from Criminal Investigations to Patrol, dubbed an opening within our Criminal Investigation Division. And Julie has been with us for three, four years now?
Three and a half.
Three, three and a half, okay. Three and a half years now, and she's just a superstar. She's a United States Army veteran, and she, she just does an excellent job. Everything she does, if I ask her to do something, I don't have to ask twice, now I don't have to worry about it. It's, it's just done, and it's done well. So, Julie? I'd like to ask Lieutenant Lennon to come up here. Lieutenant Great Lennon is our executive officer, and he's going to read the gist, and I'll hand out the citations for the officers. Some, some officers are receiving commendations, other receiving actual medals. I have the medals, and you can do that separately, but these are for incidents that occurred over the last year and a half in Cohasset. And Lieutenant Lennon will read the gist. Great. I just want to warn anybody in the audience who are listening at home that some of the discretion is in these instances, and so discretion. This first award is the Life Saving Medal awarded to Sergeant Garrett Hunt and Natural Resource Officer Joshua Kimball. On the afternoon of January 1, 2023, Sergeant Garrett Hunt and Officer Joshua Kimball responded to a call for a male party making suicidal threats. On arrival, officers were told by the caller that her son had stabbed himself in the neck and ran to his room upstairs. Officers ran upstairs to find the male in his room with the door barricaded shut, yelling that he wanted to die. After assessing the situation and realizing this person could lose their life because of the type of injury reported, officers tactically forced their way into the bedroom. They found the male party standing in the room with a wound to his neck stating that he wanted to die. He was bleeding profusely from the neck from a self-inflicted knife wound and proceeded to fall to the floor. Sergeant Hunt and Officer Kimball secured the knife and immediately rendered first aid to the patient by covering and applying steady pressure to the wounds. While rendering aid, they carried the patient down the stairs to the front door where paramedics could assess him. The patient was transported to the hospital where he was stabilized. As a result of the immediate actions that Sergeant Hunt and Officer Kimball took, this person's life was saved and are hereby, they are hereby awarded the Cohasset Police Department's Life Saving Medal. On the evening of June 8, 2022, Officer Gregory Lawrence responded to a call for a reported structure fire. Officer Lawrence was first on scene. The reporting party had told him that she had just left her young children with the babysitter who was cooking pizza. She said that something had caught on fire in the area of the kitchen stove. Officer Lawrence immediately grabbed his portable fire extinguisher from his patrol car and ran into the home. In the kitchen, he observed a stove with flames engulfing it. Officer Lawrence extinguished the fire completely, preventing it from spreading further into the home. As a result of Officer Lawrence's quick thinking and outstanding actions, he is hereby awarded the Cohasset Police Department's Excellence Award. The next award is for Officer Robert DeFradis, who couldn't, couldn't be here tonight. He was also awarded the Life Saving Medal. In the early morning hours of November 14, 2022, Officer Robert DeFradis was dispatched to a male party having difficulty breathing. Upon arriving, dispatch notified him that the male was now unresponsive. Officer DeFradis immediately retrieved his medical gear, including his cruiser AED. The calling party led Officer DeFradis to the upstairs bathroom where the male party was face down on the floor. Officer DeFradis checked the male's vitals, and he wasn't breathing and had no pulse. He notified dispatch and started CPR, including utilizing the AID. After initial, an initial shock was given, Officer, Officer DeFradis continued CPR until Cohasset Fire Department paramedics took over and transported the male party to the hospital where he survived. As a result of Officer DeFradis's actions that morning, he is hereby awarded the Cohasset Police Department's Life Saving Medal. Next award is Officer Thomas Brown, receiving the, also receiving the Life Saving Medal. On the evening of September 1st, excuse me, September 21, 2022, Officer Thomas Brown was dispatched to report of a young female on the ground with a laceration to her head outside a local gym. She had collapsed while working out and struck her head on the ground. When Officer Brown arrived, he observed the juvenile female was laying on the ground, unresponsive, and turning blue. Officer Brown immediately notified dispatch and retrieved his cruiser's AED and started CPR. Officer Brown continued CPR until Cohasset Fire Personnel arrived on scene and took over care of the patient. She was transported to the hospital where she was stabilized, and after a lengthy stay, she made a full recovery. If it weren't for Officer Brown's immediate actions, this young girl may not have survived. As a result of Officer Brown's life-saving actions, he is hereby awarded the Cohasset Police Department's Life Saving Medal. Natural Resource Officer Joshua Kimball, the Excellence Award. On the afternoon of January 31, 2022, Natural Resource Officer Joshua Kimball responded to the area of the Whitney Spur rail trail for a reported female who had fallen into the Whitney Woods, Waukesha State Park area, and had broken her ankle. Officer Kimball, along with Cohasset Fire Personnel, made their way into the park on the department's UTV. Officer Kimball drove the UTV through the trail that consisted of snow 25 to 30 inches deep. As a result of the conditions and the terrain, the UTV had a mechanical failure, and Kimball and both paramedics had to continue on foot. They trekked through approximately 400 yards of deep snow and thick brush locating the female. Paramedics tended to the injured party, and Officer Kimball coordinated with dispatch and other officers on a safe extraction. Officer Kimball and Cohasset Fire Paramedics safely extracted the injured female back through the woods where she was transported to the hospital for treatment. Officer Kimball's actions that day are a credit to his commitment to the profession and the people of this town. He is hereby awarded the Cohasset Police Department's Excellence Award. The next award is a Group Meritorious Service Award issued to Detective Lieutenant Michael Lopes, Sergeant Harrison Schmidt, Sergeant Patrick Ritten, Officer Gregory Lawrence, On the evening of October 8, 2022, and the following day of October 9, Cohasset Detective Lieutenant Michael Lopes, Officers Gregory Lawrence, Thomas Brown, Patrick Ritten, and Detective Harrison Schmidt, former detective, now sergeant, were involved in the search for a missing person in the area of Whitney Woods, Waukesha State Park. Officers Brown and Lawrence, along with multiple assets including Canines and the State Police Air Wing, conducted an initial overnight search of the woods where the missing person was reportedly last seen to Nobil. The following morning, Cohasset Police Personnel and outside assets, including the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council Canines, search personnel, and investigative support unit, as well as state and environmental police, were called in for a full-scale search. After receiving an approximate possible location of the missing person, Detective Lieutenant Lopes assembled a search party led by Officers Ritten and Schmidt. The group of officers trekked approximately 1 and 1/4 miles off trail into the woods, locating the party in an isolated part of the park. Sadly, he was deceased. Detective Lieutenant Lopes, Officer Ritten, Detective Schmidt coordinated with officers at the man post to conduct a tactical extraction of the decedent through the thick brush swamp in the waist deep water. The officers' actions that day showed a high degree of initiative, professionalism, and ability in a critical situation, and they are hereby awarded the Group Meritorious Service And last, but certainly not least, Sergeant Christie Tarantino, receiving a, a new award to the department, known as the Preservation of Life Medal. On January 6, 2022, approximately 10:23 PM, a tactical alert was initiated by the Hull Police Department after a reported armed male stole a truck, crashed it, and fled the crash site on foot. As a result of the tactical alert and in accordance with regional, the regional tactical plan, Cohasset Police Sergeant Christie Tarantino, along with several other Cohasset officers, responded to the town of Hull to assist. At approximately 10:48 PM, Hull Police received a 911 call from an apartment complex in Hull for a report of an armed home invasion and domestic disturbance in progress. Sergeant Tarantino was dispatched to that location. It was updated that the suspect was a black male known to both Hull and Cohasset Police. Dispatch further revised that the calling party said that the male had a knife and had, quote, "beat a female's face and then threw her downstairs," end quote. Sergeant Tarantino arrived on scene simultaneously with a Hull Police Cruiser, exited his cruiser, and took a position of cover near the front entrance of the apartment. Other police officers from several surrounding agencies and the state police were also arriving on scene. A black male exited the front door of the unit and was immediately given orders by several officers from other agencies at the same time. The male complied with the officers' commands and laid down on the ground. Several officers were yelling, "He has something in his hands." It was a highly tense and chaotic scene. Sergeant Tarantino couldn't see the male's face while he was on the ground. However, he saw that he was wearing a green coat and a black hat similar to what a male who worked at a local convenience store, who Sergeant Tarantino knew by name and had been wearing earlier in the evening. Sergeant Tarantino had spoken to this male earlier in the evening while he was at the store. As officers on scene were yelling commands and the situation appeared to be escalating with other officers arriving on location, tensions were high. Sergeant Tarantino moved from his position of cover to the front of the building to get in a better position to intervene and attempt to further identify the male. Sergeant Tarantino yelled out the male's name, and when the male raised his head, Sergeant Tarantino was able to confirm it was the male from the convenience store and not the identified suspect. Sergeant Tarantino immediately yelled, "It's not the subject's name that was wanted. I know who he is." Sergeant Tarantino yelled to the officers to lower their guns as he moved forward to place himself between the other officers on scene and the male. He then grabbed the male under his arm, helped him to his feet, and moved him out of the doorway into safety. Sergeant Tarantino then entered the residence with two Hull Police officers to make sure that the suspect was not hiding inside. A short time later, the suspect was located in another apartment. He was apprehended and charged with numerous crimes. The female that he had assaulted sustained serious injuries. For distinguishing himself by, by employing exceptional tactics and exercising sound judgment beyond an all demure duty to preserve the life of another during a volatile or dangerous encounter while protecting the safety and security of the public and his or her fellow officers, the Preservation of Life Medal is hereby awarded to Sergeant Christie Tarantino. Thank you, and congratulations, everybody. That concludes the awards. Thank you, board.
Well, I think we all should stand up.
I've never seen them so uncomfortable.
That's why we, that's why we kept on clapping.
Part of the training.
Thanks again.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Red.
Don't get the audience. That's your great work. Begin the hearing.
Which is, I guess we know where the excitement is. Okay. We're, a, a public hearing on the Atlantica Operating LLC doing business as Old Salt House. They want a new on-premise alcohol license and a common vitular license. My understanding is, even though it is a new license, it's just a continuation of the previous. Bernie Lampke, would you like to give us an overview?
Good evening, everyone. I feel somewhat inadequate after the wonderful presentations that you had here.
Should we read the hearing notice? Should we, should we read the hearing notice at once? Okay. Before we begin.
Yeah. Could you read that?
Do that, and then we can start the hearing. The representatives of the licensing.
Anyone from Atlantica?
So we do have a person raising, raising their hand. Is that Mr.?
Sylvia. Sylvia.
Well, I'm going to read the public hearing notice first. The Cohasset Select Board, acting as a liquor licensing authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 7, 2023, at 10:00 PM, at 91, 7:00 PM, at 91 Sawyer Street, Willacott Commons, Cohasset, Mass., to consider the application of Atlantica Operating LLC doing business as Old Salt House, located at 44 Border Street, for a new annual on-premises all-alcohol restaurant license. The proposed manager is Paul Sylvia. The licensed premises is at 44 Border Street, with the first floor in whole consisting of dining area and bar, and second-floor stockroom. Inside seating capacity is 24. Outside enclosed patio area seating capacity is 96. Entrance and exit from 44 Border Street for patrons and employees. The public is invited to offer input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing by emailing selectboardcomments@cohasset.org or in person at the hearing. Public can also attend via the Zoom platform. Details for access to the Zoom platform for this hearing will be posted on the Select Board's agenda when posted. The agenda will be available online at cohassetmass.org. In hearing, in the meeting's hearing notice of calendar section located in the bottom front side of the town website.
Chairman and members of the board, my name is Jim Lampke. I'm a special counsel to the town for licensing matters. Anyone who's going to testify, I'll be happy to swear them in, including the proposed manager and representative. What else? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter now in hearing should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Medicaid.
It's his beard, Tom.
Are you muted?
It's on you.
Oh.
Yep.
I do.
Thank you. As read by the chairman, this is a hearing for a license for the Old Salt House. I reviewed the application, and everything seems to be in order. Typically, the applicant would make some explanation of what they intend to do. I know it's a well-known location, and I'll defer to the board in terms of calling upon the applicant.
Well, I think we'd like to hear the applicant explain what you're doing and give us a little history.
Thank you, Honorable Board, for having me. Apologize for my voice. A little sick at the moment, but Cohasset Hospitality Partners has been running the Old Salt House, in Cohasset, for the past couple of years, and we'd like to continue along with that. And we are looking to have a busy season this summer and have people in the, on the patio as well as inside the premises.
Any comments from the board?
I just have a couple.
Diane?
Couple of questions. Are you, are you open year-round, or is this just the summer?
So we had been open year-round, and we are moving towards a more seasonal experience at this point.
Okay. And then just a question in terms of this license. Is, is it a new license because of the different operating hours and it being extricated from the Atlantica property? Is that why this is different and not a renewal?
As I understand it, it was a new application for a new operation. If the, if the licenses for an annual license, and they're going to be switching to a seasonal operation, they can downgrade the license, our application, and they may give the board another license in the draw, so to speak, to be available.
So as far as I understand, Diane, and I'm not, I'll let the applicant speak for themselves. It was a, they had to unwind, the properties were sold, so they had to kind of unwind that and, and kind of reset the boundaries of the kitchen and all of that. And then, because the Atlantica and Old Salt House are functionally operated underneath the same license, they need to kind of let them go. they need to kind of let them go. So it's not a new operation in the sense that we know it, but it is a new legal enterprise. And the license is new, though it's basically picking up the one that used to be.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Paul, I'm sorry.
So this is strictly for just Old Salt House? Nothing to do with Atlantica, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
If I may, just quick questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Corey.
Have you managed restaurants before? How long have you been with the Red Lion, the Cohasset Hospitality Group? Just a little bit of that.
I've managed restaurants for over 10 years and I've been with Cohasset Hospitality Group for almost two years now.
You have this. Notice for the next one.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
What's the form of motion?
It's a public hearing.
Right, okay, I'm sorry, I was catching up a little here. Justin, is there anybody on the, in Zoom? Any public comments?
I don't see any. I do not see any. There is one person with their hand up, but they're for.
Another one.
Another one. Anybody who is watching on your, on Zoom, you can raise your hand and we'll see it. Not hearing. Is there any discussion from anybody in the audience here? No further discussion from the board? Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
I would move to grant the application of Atlantica Operating LLC. Well, before I do that, what are the operating hours? It's not clear from the information we have that you're requesting. Is it within the application process?
We have the hearing, we don't have the application.
Yeah, we don't have the application. Which we really.
Yes.
Do you want to tell us, Sylvia? We're just checking on the actual application.
Right.
I don't know if you can hear, because people can't hear.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
What are the proposed hours of operation?
So we typically change our hours of operation as we get into the summer. Start out with five days a week, doing dinner and then lunch on Saturdays and Sundays. And then as we get further into the summer, we extend to doing lunch, which is typically, I believe, 11:30. And then we stop any service at 10 o'clock typically.
Is Attorney Lampke, is this what's actually on the license application? Or is there not some kind of obligation to have consistency in the licensing?
We're checking on the license application, but when you voted, you should specify what the hours are. If it's in an application, as indicated in the application, but the hours should be approved by the board. That's an important aspect of the board's function in approving any license, what the hours of operation are going to be. So if the manager.
Well, that was my understanding. The question is if they get licensed to be open from 10 to 6 and they elect to close at 4, is that, I thought when you got your license, you had to be open all those hours and only those hours.
You're supposed to, because a license is for the convenience of the public, an alcohol license, you're supposed to be observing those hours. Sometimes there may be a situation where someone is either sick or on vacation or, you know, the weather is stormy or something and they close early. But otherwise, you're supposed to be open the hours that they applied for. And they're not supposed to be changing the hours without the approval of the board, except if it's an emergency situation.
That was my understanding. Did you, did you hear that? Do you understand that?
Yes, sir.
Are you delineating the specific hours that you will be open?
I would defer to whatever's in the application.
So you don't know. But you, what I'm hearing earlier is, I think you were saying that you'll change that as, as the season goes on and business ebbs and flows. Is that your intent?
That was my understanding of how we were going to handle that this year. Or that's what we've done last year, but we would heed the board's, whatever the board decided.
Attorney Lampke is.
Maybe we could delay and move on to the next one.
Paul.
Interesting, we may want to delay it. We have no set hours.
You have no set hours, yeah.
No, that we could even ask you to stick to.
Yeah.
I mean, it's generally 11:30 for, for lunch and then we go until 10 o'clock at night.
Is, is that, do we have the license here?
You could continue this hearing till the next meeting and request the applicant to submit a specific definitive schedule of hours.
Diane?
Sure. I, I just want to note that, I mean, I think, I think administratively it's on us because we should have their application at the ready. But I'm willing to defer this to our next meeting. But I think we need to make sure we have, I'm sure they applied for a certain set of hours because that's what's required in the application. So that's on us for not having that ready.
You have two hands raised.
You have a.
I do have two hands raised.
Okay.
Are you taking questions?
Yes, we're taking questions.
Someone promote the first person.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. My name is Ryan Gosd. I actually represent Atlantica Operating LLC. I apologize for not being able to unmute myself earlier, but perhaps I can help answer the question with respect to the hours of operation. So everything is being applied for as it was prior to this quote-unquote new license.
Okay.
You lost your right.
We may owe him an apology, but we don't have it.
I think.
Ryan, you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. It just added me as a panelist, I apologize. So with respect to the hours of operation, everything will be in keeping with what was there previously. So this is just applying for a quote-unquote new license to replace what was there prior. Our operations previously were 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM during the week and 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM on Sundays.
And you will be open all of those hours?
That would be the latest, that would be, they would be permitted to be open under the ABCC's regulations. So it's not technically a violation if they were to close a little bit earlier, but that would be the latest that they would be permitted to be open.
So if they closed a little bit early, but our attorney indicates that you can't vary it from week to week and you have to, it's a public convenience that you're getting this liquor license. So if for you to close on a whim, I think is, is something that is not permissible. So what you're saying, do you understand?
No, I understand your position. I can just say that under the state regulations with respect to hours of operation, there is no minimum in terms of when you must operate. It's, the town stipulates to the latest closing hour and that would be the 1:00 AM during the week.
Okay.
And as well.
I'm a little confused. Mr. Sylvia said that you close at 10, but you're looking for an extension to 1 on Saturdays and Sundays?
That was what was on the previous license. I'm looking at the, the last license that was issued in 2021 and that is the hours of operation that was on previously.
Jane?
Are we able to issue a license up until 10:00 PM? Or is there a state requirement that we have to issue it at a certain time period?
Technically, when the license is issued, the licensee has the discretion of 11 to 11. They have, and I should say discretion, they are to operate during 11 to 11. The local board can grant earlier than 11 or later than 11 hours. Typically, it's spelled out in some communications. I didn't see the communication. And I guess we don't have the application.
I have the.
Oh, you have the application?
It does not. It does not have the hours.
Okay.
I move to continue it until we get an application that clearly states the hours because the current one we have does not.
Second.
We've had a motion made and seconded to table this, to continue this. Made and seconded. Is there any discussion? And you can discuss on this, by the way.
Well, I think we want to invite the applicant to provide the hours that they're requesting, just so we've got the clear paperwork in hand.
Yeah, well, we will.
And we're going to treat it as the new application that it is.
Yes.
Is that a specific date to continue?
Yeah.
February 28.
Is February 28th work for you?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to continue to February 28th. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stanchion? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, everyone.
Could I just, you know, I'm levitating. I mean, I just want to make sure that when we come to a meeting and we invite the public and we post a hearing and we have, you know, the applicants, we owe them preparation. So I want to make sure that we understand as this board that we shouldn't be inviting in people, applicants, and holding public hearings unless we are ready and prepared to make decisions and have deliberations.
I, I think that's very true. I don't think that we can do that. However, I will say in this case evidently their attorney, assuming he's an attorney, filed an application without putting the hours on there. So we should have picked up on it, but they should not have filed an application with this, an incomplete. I mean, incomplete applications are always a difficult time.
Assuming that it specifically asks for that. But I do think there's responsibility on our part to make sure.
Oh, I agree, absolutely.
So we don't send people away.
I agree. All right, so we're moving on to our next hearing. Public hearing on Split Rock Social Incorporated doing business as Split Rock Social at 12 Parking Way. The Cohasset Select Board, acting as a liquor licensing authority, will hold a public. All right, we'll, we'll hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 7, 2023, at 7:25 PM at 91 Sawyer Street, Willacott Commons, Cohasset, Mass, to consider the application of Split Rock Social Incorporated doing business as Split Rock Social for a new paragraph 12 wine and malt restaurant license, seasonal license. The proposed manager is Wesley Baltzer. The licensed premises is at 12 Parking Way Cohasset, Mass, and is a seasonal April to October oyster bar and beer garden that will be an entirely outside concept located in the rear parking lot of 12 Parking Way and Cohasset. All food, beer, and wine service will take place in a 3,500 square foot outdoor patio that will be almost entirely enclosed aside from one main entrance and three emergency exits. All beer and wine will be poured from an enclosed shipping container bar, which also includes one ADA compliant restroom and two additional restrooms. During non-business hours, the container bar with all unsight beer and wine will have the ability to be locked up for storage and safety. The public is invited to offer input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing by emailing selectboardcomments@cohasset.org or in person at the hearing. Person, public can also attend via the Zoom platform. Details for access to the Zoom platform for this hearing will be posted on the Select Board's agenda. When posted, the agenda will be available online at www.cohassetmass.org. In the meeting's hearings notice of calendar section, located in the bottom front page of the website. Do we have somebody here from Split Rock Social? Please identify yourself and.
Would you like me to swear in?
Yes, could you swear them?
Anyone who's going to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give in the matter now in hearings should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You do?
I do.
Is Ryan with you guys as well? Is Ryan with you guys as well? No. But Aaron is. Aaron is, yeah.
Okay.
So Ryan Hilton and Aaron Herman were the co-owners of Split Rock. This is Wesley Baltzer, who's our chairman.
So explain what, what you're looking to do and.
Sure. Yeah, so we've, like, heard a couple of times in the past. It was basically last spring where we were granted our hearing malt license. Unfortunately, it was, it lapsed in the making of the year. So we're really just trying to renew that license. We weren't able to open our business due to some construction challenges in 2022. But we're at full steam ahead and actually we have the shipping containers delivered on Monday the 13th, next Monday. We'll be excited about that. So we're really here just renew and hopefully continue the laws for six months.
Any other comments?
No, nothing for me.
Are, this is a new license?
It's a new license, although they did have a license previously, but the license lapsed due to non-renewal. So therefore, it has to be treated as, as if it is a new license altogether. So even though they had a license before, this is how a new license applicant underscores the importance of establishments getting their renewal papers in for, you know, the due date.
Yeah, it, it does, that as we saw in our previous hearing about the dates and times. What are your dates and times? Do we have a copy of the dates and times?
It should be in the license application. Our hours are 12 to 9, Wednesday through Saturday.
Okay. Okay. Comments from the board, questions? Are there any comments from the audience?
Could you repeat the hours again, please? 12 to 9, Wednesday through Saturday, 12 to 6 on Sunday. Actually, last time we met in the spring, there was some conversation around the holiday weekends. And I believe it was granted that we would be able to open, we would alter our hours on holiday weekends. In July, we were, they were meant to be able to do 12 to 9 on those Sundays and 12 to 6 on the holiday Mondays. That was also.
So you're not going to be open on Tuesday, from what you're saying?
Never be open on Tuesday.
Okay. So if the board were inclined to approve the hours in the days of the week, Monday through Saturday, 12 to 9, and on Sunday, 12 to 6?
Sorry, Wednesday through Saturday, 12 to 9, in normal operating hours. Sunday, 12 to 6.
12 to 6 plus the board, they're asking the board to give them permission to open on Monday holidays. And the hours on Monday holidays that you're requesting?
12 to 6.
12 to 6. 12 to 6.
Jane?
So one of the issues that's been brought to our attention is the parking demand and capacity within the village. I noticed that this is a 60-person capacity. And when reviewing the parking study, it doesn't appear that there really was one that, that the information relied upon was from the MAPC 2015 study, which has its own issues. And Cohasset has since grown pretty substantially over the course of that time. So one of the issues that I know is a concern is parking. The village is already super crowded and busy. And to load in potentially another 60 people there is a public safety concern potentially. And it's, you know, part of an issue that all of the businesses are facing with respect to parking capacity. But I did want to raise that because I know that that was something that was brought to our attention as a public safety issue. So I just wanted to hear from the applicant what you have to say.
Yeah, thanks for raising that. We actually received the same objection during our application process last spring. We funded our own parking study, which they did members of the previous study that had been done, that was done as an analysis on top of that initial study. And we found that the beer garden would actually cause an opening hours and causing additional challenges.
And they visited the site and they looked at all the parking and they gave you a list. And they visited the site and they looked at all the parking and they gave you a list of all the new?
They published an entire report that we didn't provide.
Well, I read the report and it seems to me that they did not visit it. And I don't know if they are aware of the other restaurants and establishments that have opened since 2015, which is a matter of concern. Because how can you plan if you're not even aware of these other restaurants? And you haven't been to the site. If they'd gone to the site, they would have seen overlooking is a very popular Mexican restaurant. There's a couple of, I'm not sure on the or, and there's other activity, which, you know, I looked at that parking study and it, it was just taking 2015, actually data from 2014 and earlier with no consideration of the impact of the parking that now exists there.
So, hi. We, we did go into pretty lengthy conversations through multiple reviews with the planning board around this topic. And this was talked about at length. We, we funded our own project, as Ryan mentioned, and that was overlaid with the 2015 study as an, as kind of an overlaying thing to bring us up to speed on the 2015 study. And the biggest thing that we found, that we talked about with the planning board and went back and forth on several times, was that the hours that our hours of operation made it so that it wasn't conflicting with a lot of the peak traffic that was in the downtown area. So that was the decision that was made by the planning board, was that that was okay and to move forward. So, I mean, I guess I would just kind of, I'm just a little surprised that we're bringing this up again after we talked about that with the, the planning board at length just last year.
Corey?
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I do want to, you know, say from my perspective, I mean, number one, this is substantially no different than what we saw a few months ago. And I know it's just clerical error not getting the renewal in time. So I think we'd save a lot of time if we got that done next time. I think you guys fully understand that. But, yeah, when it comes to parking, I think we all understand we have a parking problem. That's not necessarily this applicant's problem. That's really what, I mean, the planning board, we have a bylaw issue where it says if you have, if you were within 100 feet of the town parking lot, you don't have to have parking for your commercial entity. That's a problem. We have to deal with that. Not on this applicant. We're not going to bring every barber shop or every whatever in front of us to say you didn't have enough parking. So I don't think we, it's fair to hold one applicant, you know, responsible for the parking situation of the bylaws you have structurally. So that being said, considering this is the same thing we saw a while ago, we've gone through this process already and understand that the applicant will, again, going forward, not miss this clerical process. We could just, I think.
Diane?
Yeah, I, I do want to say the same thing. I mean, ultimately, the, the parking discussions take place at the planning board. And I know it was exhaustive. And it, it is a townwide problem and shouldn't be kind of layered on to any one business trying to, trying to succeed in, in the community. Having said that, I do think it's something that we can talk about as we get presented with, from any business, options to expand hours, options to open other days, you know, use expansion. I think entertainment is, is, is something to talk about too, to the extent that that feeds into, you know, a different level of activity. But I think straight for the, for the business as proposed for these hours and the, the license that we previously approved, I would be supportive of moving forward with that.
Paul, do you have any thoughts on that, Jane?
No, I'm kind of running along those parallel lines. It's not on them. It's really on us to make the improvements down the road. But I do agree with Diane about changes in hours and things like that. We, we really have to start looking at parking and future projects. But as to this one, I know these guys have been members of the boards and they worked hard. But I think that they'll be up to date the next time you make the application.
Okay, Jane?
I think that we're, I'm, we have a lot of lives to approve it.
Okay, Jane?
I'd be inclined to approve it too. I just want, really, this is more a statement for the board that if we just say, oh, we're just going to constantly approve everything and let everything be a disaster because it's no business's fault, then that creates a public safety issue that we just responsibly have to take into account, including for the safety of our residents. And so I actually think the right answer is probably referring this issue to our zoning bylaw group to really start focusing in it on parking. Not, that's not the applicant's issue. And the applicant, I appreciate, has done a lot of work and invested a lot of money and reliance on the prior license that they got. But it is an issue that I think we need to zone in on more as we look at these increasing uses in tight areas. And we can't rely on this MAPC study from 2015 anymore. It simply doesn't represent current conditions. And so all applicants out there should know, you cannot rely on it. You have to do an onsite actual review.
Is this our final, our final liquor license, right? Do we have another one after this anyway? So is we're kind of moot at this point?
Right, then this may solve the issue until we reform zoning.
Is the last restaurant that's open?
No, there's, there's one more.
There's one more phone?
I, I think you used the right verb, which is zone in. I mean, this is, this is really ultimately the parking and business and expansion and building is, is in the purview of our zoning bylaws and our planning board and in terms of finding the parking. So I, I think we really do need to stay on top of that and, and make some accommodations because we're a tight little community. We want everybody's business to succeed, which means bringing as many people into the village as possible. But there's a, there's a breaking point at which it doesn't become convenient for people. But again.
If they can't park, they won't come to your.
But it's, it's, you know, I hope it's something the planning board discusses as they look at every new application for mixed-use buildings and I.
Yeah. New upcoming projects, zoning really ought to dig their teeth into it. It is a problem.
And, and I tend to think that, I am a little concerned about relying on data that that, that's old and then rehashing that. But I do think we, the town has a very strong vested interest in bringing vitality to, to the business. And I know you've, you've had your, your difficulties. So, but I think the other applicants should know that we are paying attention to these kinds of things. And these kinds of questions will be asked, even though we're, obviously, as you can see, we're in favor of, of you guys operating a very successful business. But it is a matter of, of public concern, and I think the Select Board does need to, to address some things. And I know in the zoning bylaw, this particular thing will not be on this cycle of some of the zoning bylaws, but it's part of the future. You know, we're going to have two or another, two, maybe a third major zoning thing. But that's off the subject. Is there any further discussion on this particular thing, Corey?
Just one question, Mr. Balzer. Is that how you pronounce your name? You were the, were you the manager from the last year's applicant? So we went through the whole thing. I just wanted to be sure. Okay.
Okay.
In that case, I would move to approve the application for Split Rock Social.
Hold, hold on for just one second. Justin, is anybody in the public? Okay, very good. Corey's made a motion. A second?
All right, let me, I'll finish the motion.
Yeah, fine.
Then I move to approve the application for Split Rock Social, Inc., 17 Mohawk Way, Cohasset, Massachusetts, for a retail alcohol beverage license. The hours, Wednesday through Saturday, 12 to 9, Sunday, 12 to 6, and Monday holidays only, 12 to 6. Again, okay.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to, to grant a restaurant wine and malt license, common victular and entertainment to Split Rock Social. A motion is made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Justin, there's no further discussion on?
There's not, Mr. Chair.
On Zoom. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Extention? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. I, you know, we do ask these questions, but that, that's because we're doing our job and we really look forward to what you're going to do to our downtown. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Extension of hours, Red Lion Inn. Do we have any?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Could you include victular?
No.
I only give the liquor license, so if we want to do victulars and.
Never mind. Come back.
So I didn't have any.
Take a break for 10 minutes?
Corey has to do the rest of the.
Oh, yeah.
That was, that was just for the liquor license because of the hours. I move that we approve the, actually, can someone else, I can't say victular. Did I say it right?
You said it right.
Fine, yeah. Right, we got it. We got it. We got it.
I can't get through that word. So I move that we approve the common victular. Okay, license and entertainment license for Split Rock Social.
Same hours that you outlined for the?
Yep, for the hours, Wednesday through Saturday, 12 to 9, Sunday, 12 to 6, and Monday holidays only, 12 to 6.
Okay, and second?
Second.
The motion made in second?
I just have a question, just in terms of the entertainment license. You know, what, what is your anticipated use of that?
Yeah, we have a very small stage set up that will just basically provide single-person acts, acoustic guitars, things like that. I think the large majority of our meetings will be just amplified music through our sound system, which we talked about with the planning board, that what decibel levels make the sound.
Okay.
Open air in the village this year. Maybe live music will not exceed what the decibel levels are for our regular amplified. Nothing beyond that, just a single person on guitar.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Extention? Motion carries again unanimously. Okay, extension of hours for the Red Lion Inn. Somebody from?
Now I'm recusing.
Oh, we're going to take a recess for five minutes?
I'm recusing myself.
Oh, you're recusing yourself. Oh, okay.
Great, thank you. Good luck.
Yeah.
Can't wait.
We have somebody here from the Red Lion Inn?
Yes, good evening. It's me, Tony, the general manager.
Hi, Tony.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to be part of this meeting tonight.
So Tony, what hours are you looking to extend?
So there is, there are a few, and mostly there in, on Sundays. We have May 7th, and these are all for the cave. From 10 PM to midnight. On May 28th, from 10 PM to midnight. On Sunday, June 25th, from 10 PM to midnight. On Sunday, July 23rd, 10 PM to midnight. Sunday, October 8th. We're looking for Barn to be open until 11 PM and the Cave till 1 AM. And October 15th, the Cave until midnight. These are all the extensions for this year.
Okay, what, what is the reason why you are needing these or what, or requesting these extensions?
These are extensions for Sunday. Usually on Sunday, we are, after the weddings, the guests are looking for going to the cave and have an after-party. So usually on Sundays, the cave, it's not open. And that's why we're looking for extension.
Okay, so you're basically, and, and do you offer this to your wedding parties? Your, that this is something they can expect if they want to, or how does that work?
No, usually we don't offer because the cave, it's not open on Sunday. But they are, most of the time, the guests are required, or they're asking us if it's possible to have their event after the, after the wedding in the cave.
Okay. Have you spoken to the neighbors?
Yes, I sent email to the neighbors probably three months ago, maybe four.
Their response?
There was no response.
Are there any neighbors here? If there, if there are, I see a lot of people in the audience and I was just wondering if you, if there are people in the audience who want to speak to this issue? Okay. Any Zoom?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So any comments from the board?
Just, just to.
Diane?
Just to contextualize for, for those that are wondering what we're doing. One of the things that when we originally granted the Red Lion Inn liquor licenses, they, they had asked for the flexibility to have extended hours when they had special events. And at the time, we were not, the board was not comfortable with just saying, sure, you know, you can be open till midnight or 1 PM for your internal facilities. And we asked them to come to us, you know, once or twice a year with recommendation, with, with a, with a request to extend hours for inside the building, specifically for after-parties. Most of these are just private, private functions. So that's what we were just given. I'm inclined to make a motion if there is no further discussion.
I don't know if there's no further discussion. Are there, is, on these, Diane brings up a good point. Are these restricted to guests of the party or, or will these in any way be open to people, to the general public?
No, you know, yeah, these are restricted for the guests attending the, the wedding. We are not open for the public.
Okay. Further comments from the board?
I have a question.
Go. Paul and then Corey.
After that, there are neighbors to be concerned about after these hours. Because I've been by there. It can get pretty loud, but weddings do, and that's all right. But what are you taking, are you taking the neighbors into account? And also, I'm a little concerned about the safety as far as, you know, it's a late hour, people driving, after-party, and we don't have any hotels in town anymore besides just the inn. So I'm a little concerned about that.
Do you have any comments about that, Tony?
Yes. So the, the events after, after the wedding is there in the cave? Or, as you know, it's, it's inside the Just Club. So this is underground and there is no noise at all from, you know, coming out. And we have managers as well managing the stuff. And we have security guards at the door so to make sure that there is no people going out on the street with drinks. Also, we have a front desk manager or innkeeper also helping throughout the event.
There have been a lot of, go ahead, Tony, I'm sorry.
So we have, since I took over the Red Lion Inn, I created a lot of policies and procedures to make sure to have very safety events without any, any issues with, with the neighbors or with the guests.
I've, Corey, you've set your hand. You're just.
No, no, yeah, I just, I, historically, I've read more, most recently voted against these. After we came out of the pandemic, I knew there's a lot of squish. I understand that we have the exception for special events, New Year's. I mean, there's holidays and there's events. I've expressed concern that, you know, there is a liquor license, there are hours. Those were concerns at the time. I voted against these previously. I will vote against this tonight because I do think that we have hours and I feel for the people that are applying, but I also feel a responsibility to our community in that we've established these things and we shouldn't be just, you know, throwing them out every 10 seconds. That's, I'm being hyperbolic, my apologies. But, you know, for me, I can't, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I think my, that's my, my feeling. I'm also concerned, by the way. There's been a number of glasses and nips found in the bushes around the establishment, which is not to be, to be expected with liquor licenses. But I think some of them are glasses from the Red Lion. So clearly people are sneaking drinks of, out of your facility. And there are nips which suggest to me that people are drinking either before or after. And there are nips which suggest to me that people are drinking either before or after and all that. I also think that the understanding in order for the Red Lion to become the facility that it was, that it would not contribute further to some of the degradation of quality of living for the neighborhoods, and I don't think that has changed. So I think I would really not be inclined to grant these. I think you have what you have, and you have to tell your clients that, yes, they'd like to do this, but that's not it, and Diane, I see your hand.
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I would vote in favor of this, and I think one of the reasons is when we asked this venue to come back to us for these things, one of the understandings we had at the time was, A, we wanted to enable this option to keep people on premises, because what's going to happen is people are going to go to the wedding, it's going to get out at 10 o'clock at night, and they're going to go to Bees, or they're going to go to Mr. Dooly's, or they're going to go some other place, which is great for the other businesses, but they're going to leave there and potentially drink at another thing. I think this is a way to keep, you know, family members, wedding parties, sort of within the venue, so, you know, I think that was the kind of sensible discussion that got us to this point in not just allowing, you know, the liquor license to go to midnight, which we are legally able to do for any establishment, and we thought that we would tick this off on a kind of as-needed basis. So, you know, I do think, you know, it's a function facility, like it or not. And, you know, to be able to keep people kind of within that building after a wedding and theoretically staying overnight is, not that everybody would be, but I think these are not, you know, 250 people that are in the barn all going to the cave after. So anyway, I think we should think about that, but, you know, I appreciate everybody's comments.
Okay. Any other comments for the board? Anybody on Zoom?
Nope, Mr. Chair.
Anybody in the audience? Okay, I guess.
So for the purposes of moving this discussion forward, I'll make a motion to approve the extension of hours as listed in our packet for May 7th, May 28th, June 25th, July 23rd, October 8th, and October 15th for the, for the cave.
We've had a motion to extend the hours, is there a second?
Motion failed.
Hearing no second, the motion fails, the motion is, fails. Thank you. Okay, moving on. The finance director, Jennifer Mullen, to give us a FY24 director.
Good evening, thank you for having me, Jennifer Mullen, Director of Finance. So this is my first budget presentation for the Town of Cohasset.
Welcome.
Very happy to be here, I want to thank everybody for their support, Chris, Michelle, the board, in particular, people in my department, Diane and Mary and Linda and, you know, the whole finance department who go through it. Because without them doing what they do best, I can't focus on the other. I really do appreciate being able to put a lot together for the town. And we want to be able to. So this isn't, I've tried to keep it super simple. There was an email that went out yesterday, I guess they uploaded the budget overview that I presented, I don't know if everybody had a chance to review that. So what I'd like to do, before I start the presentation, what I'd like to do in the budget overview, I'd like to show you the whole picture. So these are all the estimated revenues and the recommended budget for appropriations. I will say that we are still in discussions with the community. We've had some very positive meetings with them, so I do have a number in hand now, but I have to do a finalized check when it go up. But I have presented a balanced budget for you this evening. So I will, I can take questions now on the budget overview, if you'd like, I could jump into the presentation and then take questions after.
Does anybody have any questions?
Great.
Go to the budget overview.
Thank you, so, thank you, Justin. So FY23, the foundation, this is really, you know, you're, you're basically, you're trying to find your foundations for FY24, and you're able to read your budget message and incorporate your budget message into some aspects of the budget. So as you know, the Town of Cohasset is a typically credit rating, we continue with that credit rating, we have strong finances. Supports the credit rating, as you know, they look at five different factors, and strong finances, strong management, citizen-staff collaboration, strong reserves. And Cohasset has been able to maintain on that, file that for the credit rating, which is great news. This budget supports the town's fiscal management reserve policy, the budget message does as well. In this budget, we continue to fund the reserves, we continue to address the OPEB obligation, and we continue to support for talent service. And we also have been able to complete the annual comprehensive financial report, which is the detailed and transparent reporting. And we've been able to look at it in the past, we receive an award for it every year. We just received an award for not FY22, but FY21, GF ways a little bit behind. But we continue to apply for that award, and it's a really good document that really explains it kind of like in a private industry manner with the financial statements, but also a good, to make the town do well. Next slide, please. So your operating budget revenues. The operating budget is probably one really difficult to put together because we are constrained by Proposition 2 and 1/2. So we have the 2 and 1/2% levy capacity in your budget message. I know you would like us to maximize that 2 and 1/2 levy capacity, which we have done. We've been able to estimate new growth this year at $550,000 for FY24. As you know, we do have some construction in town, and we won't capture all the new growth, but we will capture a good portion of it, so that is an income. Actually, I think last year, in the year we're in, it was $500,000, that was estimated, but it came in a little bit lower. But Mary and I have had lengthy discussions, and we feel comfortable with the $550,000 new growth that's been going on. Also, what supports the operating budget is your estimated local receipts. And as we look at the, and I will be back in front of you with another financial update for FY23, that's been a little bit lax, I do understand that, been super busy trying to catch up. But one of the things that I do look at and report to the board on the estimated local receipts is that really is your economic indicator of where we are this year and what we're looking at next year. We have increased the estimated local receipts a little bit to support this budget and support services, but they are coming in somewhat strong, but definitely cautioned of watching them, particularly for next year, and looking at the economy. The economy is in a weird place right now, you know? And we're trying to figure out, you know, the, for motor vehicle size, there's a lot of inventory out there, that wasn't the case for a long time, so we want to keep an eye on that. Also, building permits have been up, they're up significantly. Next slide, please. Stating, in this budget, I have level-funded state aid, I think this might give us some flexibility. They have had the revenue meeting at the state level, and they're looking at a 1.6 revenue growth at the state level. And I know they're going to start looking at the new tax that has been implemented, they call it the millionaire's tax, and how they might, you know, distribute that, so we keep, we do definitely are keeping an eye on that. As you know, we have a new governor, so we probably will get the governor's budget probably for another few weeks, but we will keep an eye on that. So I have level-funded state aid at the time, at this time. And state aid is made up of Chapter 70, which is your education aid, charter school reimbursements, your unrestricted government aid, which really is your old lottery, they call it, some other things are in there, and your reimbursements from your veterans and your tax exemptions. And then the other portion of your operating budget is your other available funds. This is money that we take in that is put into a separate account, does not go into the general fund, we transfer it in to support the budget. We transfer in some money from the CPC to offset the debt, because the debt is in the general fund. We do transfer some monies in from the capital stabilization fund for debt service, the Title V program, the MSBA surplus, which actually, this will be FY24 will be the last year that we'll be using that money, and we'll have the debt exclusion will run out, and for the indirect costs from the water and soil departments. Next slide, please. I like to show this graph, I think visuals are really good. So when you look at the sources of revenue that support the budget, 84% is for property taxes, that's real and property taxes, real and personal and property taxes really make up the essence of funding the operating budget. We have 7% from local receipts, 7% from state aid, and 2% from other available funds. Next slide, please. So let's discuss a little bit the budget increases. So there's been a couple surprises, there's still a couple unknowns, but right now, we've been in contact with the social vocational school, and we're looking at, you know, 39 and 1/2% increase. We do have, I think it's three new students attendance, but it's really a $60,000 increase for next year, so that's under the education budget. Health insurance, when we were at a local meeting recently, the average is 5.5%. It could be as high as 10, we're still waiting for those numbers to come in. We do have a little bit of room in the budget, so I do have 5.5% in there, maybe, hopefully we get some good news, but since we have some reserves in there, I think that will be, I think that's, that will be okay. And retirement, actually, retirement, we did pretty well this year, it was a $50,000 increase, 1.4%, which is relatively low. And the general insurance, we do have some room in our property liability, so I did plan for 5% increase in workers' comp and in property liability, and those numbers should come in soon. Next slide, please, budget increases. So one of the, one of the things that has happened, which has been great, is we have all settled union contracts, and it was at a 2, 2 and 1/2, and 3% to what we approved. Those union contracts are incorporated into the operating budget, all steps and all raises. It's solid, so I feel really good about that. Took a little bit of time because when we settled the contracts and then we had to, you know, adjust the pay rates, so as soon as all that was done, I was able to really focus in on that payroll and make sure that that was a really good, solid number. We do have a cybersecurity increase of $120,000, that is pretty steep, but we really want to make sure that we keep our cybersecurity insurance through Maya. We have been talking, we have been talking to them. It is one of the vulnerability, we try not to be vulnerable, but as you know, the local government has been vulnerable, and, you know, recently, Mintucket was hit, so we do keep an eye on that, we really want to make sure that we're funding that healthy, healthy funding. There is a, I have a 10% increase for regional dispatch, that's about $38,000, I think. We're going to probably want in on those numbers a little bit, Chris is the representative, so that might come down a little bit. We also have put additional hours in there for the police department, for the front desk, which is really a cost efficiency, because if you have more people at the front desk, then you don't have to fill it up with a police officer. And also, we're incorporating the communications position as the full salary in this budget, that's been paid for auto-funding in the past. We will be applying for a firefighter safety grant to fund an additional firefighter, and we have unfunded the assistant town engineer's position, we've taken that out of the budget, it's been vacant for a while, it's not needed at this point. I had, you know, a great conversation with Brian about that, and everybody's okay with that. So we, so we look at the budget as a whole, and realistically, and fair, you know, where do we need to increase, but where can we decrease as well, we've been able to do that. Next slide, please. Okay, budget appropriations. Another good snapshot here, so as you know, the biggest part of the budget is education at 51%. The little different shades of blue, you have 9% public safety, and then DPW, oh, I think, your benefits and insurance is 24%. So really, the makeup of the budget is, you know, fixed costs, benefits, insurance, people, you know, we're a service industry. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, it incorporates the select board's goals outlined in the budget message. And, you know, in other financing news, you know, we have an updated request for the 10-year capital plan, we keep, Michelle is the liaison to the capital committee and working through that with the capital budget committee. And we're also have been meeting with Long-Term Financial Planning Group, and we're getting some really good information there, we're moving forward that just to, you know, get some information to everybody as we have some decisions that will probably need to debate other than the operating budget. So I am here to answer any questions they have.
Thank you, Jennifer, that was very concise and very informative. You did excellent job, welcome to Cohasset, stay for a long time.
Thank you.
Comments from the board? Diane?
I have a few questions, just the regional dispatch number, that just seems high projection that it would be that high of a increase, is that based on union costs, or?
That's one, so we did settle new contracts, and to maintain that workforce, which is really critical, that needed to go up a little bit more. Also, the system is aging, I mean, we were the first regional center, and there's, we were starting to build money for capital replacement of the budget, because the state is just not being as generous, unfortunately, with the historic operations like ours. So we have to make sure we, there's some money in there to maintain, you know, servers and other key aspects of the system. So, you know, the actual head for class is still fairly small, but it's not an insubstantial increase.
Right.
We have put a, this, this last year, just to be clear, though, we got brand-new radios for the police department, expanding the town's radio system. So the benefit, the community is really great. We've gotten lots of, lots of better equipment and service, and it's really brought the four towns, Norwell and HAM and Cohasset, all together, departments are much better integrated, which I think is a benefit for the product and better public safety.
Other comments? Jane?
So for the building permit revenue, it looks like our projection for next year is the same, but inflation is and has been on the rise.
I think I, I thought I increased the building permit revenue a little bit.
So that actually further deepens my question, do we think that that's. Any others are forecasting a market constriction in the housing and.
So.
You know, the.
Yeah, so, so. It's a good question, so John Howland, our biller commissioner, has instituted a new kind of true-up at the end, you have to find, to file a final cost affidavit, so you go in and say, well, I'm only going to do $1,000 for the kitchen, and it turns out it's $10,000 for the kitchen, and fees go up. So that has caught, that has captured a lot of additional revenue. So the inflation works both ways, the other is that the costs have gone up, it's also an increase of fees.
So it's not playing in the fees.
And now, the big spike we've seen, we're not budgeting all of that by any means, because I, you know, some of these big projects have resulted in a lot of, lot of increase, they're not going to stay that way.
Yeah.
That said, I'd say it's been really a pretty comfortable increase, because we're capturing fees we probably should have before, but we didn't, but John has really been a lot more aggressive than that, so. And to be clear, we're not, we're not higher than any other committees, we're just being more aggressive and making sure we're capturing what the real costs are.
And I also wanted to just mention that this budget is flexible, right? We don't have all the numbers in. So as we get good news, if you will, if some of these costs decrease, or if state aid comes in higher than I've anticipated, and I think it might, what we will do is decrease the estimate on local receipts. So what that does is going to create capacity for free cash. So that will be, so the numbers that you're seeing here for the, to balance the budget, they're not going to go higher than that, they will come down if anything.
Jane?
As it relates to the schools, I realize they formalized their three-year contracts as well at the same time, and unlike the town side, they didn't take money from free cash to pay for some of the increases back in the special town meeting. Do we have a sense of when you think we might be sort of coming to a conclusion about where we are in the school budget, which is one of the biggest line items in our entire budget?
No, excellent question. So we met with the school department, I think it was last week, we are looking at some numbers in some innovative ways, because they do have some ideas of new programs moving forward. So we're still in the discussion on those issues and how we might be able to help fund up some one-time costs that they may have. So we'll deal with, we'll deal with that issue as a one-time cost. And then as we look at the operating budget, I did put 3% in here, I don't see it going higher, if anything, maybe it'll come down a little bit, but we need to have a second meeting, but we should find, we should be able to finalize that, I think, in the next couple of weeks.
I will say that the meeting was very good, and again, I don't want to throw out the specifics, we'll talk more about them. We'll talk more about them. I, I think there's opportunities that are very high priorities for the school committee that we'll be able to fund in an alternative way, because there, there are things that may, you know, that may generate revenue in the future, and, but we need to, like, jump them one year, and I think we, I think we can find a way to do that creatively.
Which kind of offsets a little bit. I know that when we, when we fund union contracts, right, and we're funding for free cash, that is for the first year, just to get us through the first year. Then it's incorporated, you know, into your operating budget. And so I think, you know, we may be looking at doing something like that for the school as well.
Well, and I would just remind us all that we have ARPA funds, including partially unrestricted ARPA funds and restricted ARPA funds, one of the statutory categories being pandemic issues, to the extent that any of what we're grappling with is pandemic issues. And it's more specific than that, but I think we should look carefully to see, can we use some of those restricted categories for this one-time recovery?
Yeah, I did actually send out some numbers to you all. I think you're on the email, though, some of the ARPA funding and some suggestions we did.
Okay, excellent. Other comments? I have one comment that was sent in email, which I don't think we want to go into, but the water commissioners are concerned about, I guess there's, they were in their budget, there's some personnel issues that aren't hired anymore, and I don't know what situation is with that, and they're looking for some, for their enterprise fund, the water department's an enterprise fund, and for people, what that means, it's a separate economic entity, and they're looking for some reconciliation. Just want to let you know about that. I don't want to take tonight, time tonight.
No, I know, just, I'd like to just comment briefly to that, because I was at the water commissioners' meeting last time.
Okay.
And it is about their indirect costs. So what happens is, is when the water department puts their budget together, there's certain costs that are in the general fund that the water pays for. I have decreased those indirect costs by almost $60,000 for the water fund. When I met with the water commissioners, there was only two people there. They did decide to move on from what I had put together in the budget, and so we're moving forward with that number, but there was a decrease.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have Lee Jenkins, water commission, with a hand up.
Right, yes. Any other comments from Jennifer and from the board?
Not with this, I mean, if she's going to speak, I can actually, you know, probably speak.
Well, I think you, I think what she really wants to do is to make sure that the matter is, attention is being paid to it, so I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on that. But, because you've really answered at least my questions, which is, it's on the radar screen, and you're already halfway through solving it. But anyway, we'll recognize Lee Jenkins.
Hi, for those who don't know me, I'm Leonora Jenkins. I've been a water commissioner now in my 12th year, and for the last 10, I've been making sure that we have a very detailed annual town report, and I've worked on the budget with our Woodard and current office manager. I'm sorry that we're not finished with our budget yet, but as Mr. Creighton has noted, we do have a few questions about the indirect cost. I realize that there has been turmoil in town hall since last April, and we really haven't gotten very many financial reports that have been as detailed as previously. One issue we have is the Excel file for our indirect costs, because in it, we have an allocation page and a calculation page. One indicates our, other indicates percentages. There were just a little mistake in there, but, you know, I'm hoping we can get that rectified, but we'd like to see the whole file, because this is how we sit down and we discuss what's going on, and then we vote on it. And it's just a little bugaboo in here, and I know that Jennifer has said we reduced our budget by $60,000. Thank you very much for that. One of the big issues was the town engineer who we were paying $90,000 out of our budget for is no longer in there, so that was most of our, that was all of our decrease plus whatever. And I'm hoping that we will be able to get more information now that we are getting more settled into the new jobs, because we have issues with our current indirect costs too, that we had been asking the previous accountant for information on, that we never got, and I know Jennifer has been trying to catch up on what the other accountant has done. So we're patiently waiting, and if you could be patient with us to get the numbers together, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Do you mind if I just?
Yeah.
Just respond. Okay. The detailed reports, I did meet with Ms. Jenkins and did tailor the reports to what she wanted to see and did give them to her. There was an error in there. I fixed it and I gave them a new report. The reconciliation of the indirect costs aren't going to happen right now. I'll look at them at the end of the fiscal year. I've said that, and that's what I'm going to do. I'm not reconciling indirect costs right now. I've given them a number for their budget to move forward. One other commissioner seems happy with that number. It number decreased $60,000. At the end of the year, I'll take another look at it like they did last year. I just want to remind everybody, when the water department sets their budget and they have the indirect costs, so don't wait. We have, we expect that number to come in and support the budget, so you can't really change it mid-year. You know, we could look at maybe at the end of the fiscal year, and I think that's what's been done in the past. So I just do want to, you know, I just wanted to keep expectations where they should be, that this is the number that I have for the indirect costs. I'm not reconciling it this year. I'll look at it again at the end of the year, and it seems that one other water commissioner, there was only two, was happy with the indirect costs and wanted to move on with the budget.
Well, very good, and I think your answers have been right to the point. This has been something that's been kind of bouncing in the background for a while, and it's nice to see that you're addressing that, and it's certainly reasonable that you can do it in a timely manner, so thank you. And thank you for, for bringing that up again, you know, Lee. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, thank you again, Jack, for allowing me some time here. And Jennifer, we didn't ask you to reconcile this year. We just asked you for what the current numbers are supposed to be for this year, so that we can have a project, projection of what we might expect in retained earnings. That's all.
Okay, well, I, I don't think we really want to have a back and forth about accounting back and forth. We'll be here all night.
I know.
And we lost most of our audience earlier, but thank, thank, thank you.
Yes, you have been going on quite long this evening.
Thank you, Lee.
Your agenda is late. Thank you again.
I guess the agenda's late, well. Okay, anyway, Jennifer, thank you very much. Is there any other comments? Anybody from the audience? I know why you're all here. Half of her here and half of them from there. Anyway, moving on, is there any other comments? Jennifer, thank you very much.
It's Jennifer.
Open space and recreation. The, what's going on here is open space and recreation, one of our really special committees has got a great idea that they'd like to explain to us about a pollinator, plant pollinator garden, which is above my pay grade, so please, tell us what you're going to do.
You know, mind if we'll come up? So I'm, I'm Lacey Good. Barbara Brand. Barbara Brand from Wild Cohasset.
Okay.
And if you're not familiar with us, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We started here, and most of the work that we do is here in Cohasset, but we've sort of spread out more into the South Shore elsewhere, and actually, I'm in Boston. So our main activities are about protecting wild spaces, conservation land, protecting our local environment, basically. We started with large-scale removal of invasive plants that are a major threat and a major problem in, in Cohasset that really threaten all of our, our wild spaces, our open space, our conservation land. And we quickly realized we need to do more, not just remove the bad stuff, but put more of the good stuff back in. So we applied for a grant together with the Open Space and Recreation Committee, and we got it through the Hingham Land Trust and the Goodrich Environmental Trust portion. It's the first time they've done this kind of grant, and it's to put in basically a native pollinator meadow somewhere in Cohasset, and we're here today to ask for your permission for where we would like to site it. It will measure roughly 14 feet wide by 22, 22 feet long. It will be all made of, all planted with native plants, which means just plants that were here before settlers got here. So they're the plants that are most important for the environment, they're most important for wildlife, for endangered, everything from tiny native bees to, you know, hummingbirds, foxes, and very importantly, monarch butterflies, which were just added to the endangered species list this past July. And they are all over where we want to put this in. So we're looking at a site that, that our group has worked at extensively, together with volunteers, our own, you know, members, and with the Boy Scouts and other local groups. It's in the meadow in Wheelwright Park. It's in an area, and I've, I'll give this to you if you've not seen the.
Do you have any, any information from us? Any slides or anything?
We have the sheet, yeah.
This is, this is the, the sheet that was in the back.
What I'll do is I can give, I've got.
Because we're an environmental group, we don't want to do, lose lots of paper. So sorry, we'll sort of share here.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. So basically, the area that we're looking at is part of the field in front of, in front of Wheelwright. We chose it because it's an area that was really, really overgrown with invasive plants, some really dangerous ones. Black Swallower, which spreads through the air, which was just completely infested in that area and kills monarch butterflies and does all other kinds of terrible things that you don't want it to do. It basically changes the soil so that nothing else can grow. We also sited it in that area because there is a lot of garlic mustard in that area. Garlic mustard, when it gets into a forest, can kill the forest over a generation. And it's in Wheelwright Park, it's in every, every forest on the South Shore, basically. We've been working aggressively to remove it and really have a handle on it. This pollinator meadow, meadow, we hope, could also provide a little bit of a buffer by choosing specific plants. It's part of the reason why we got the grant. We did, as a research component, there is a native plant that has been shown to sort of hold its own against garlic mustard, and so we intend to, to put a border of that with the hope that it would spread in between the site of the meadow and the woods to help keep garlic.
So this is, I don't want to interrupt, but I think you're going to carry the vote pretty readily here, but, so you just want permission from the select board to use that port, portion of Wheelwright, which you delineated, to put your pollinating.
Exactly. We want permission for that, and we want permission to have some sort of small permanent signage at the site that would have maybe a QR code that people could get information about the plants that are there and why.
Mr. Grady.
Oh, yes, we'd like to put in the birdhouse.
Oh, oh, you're not giving us birdhouses if we vote in favor?
Which there's species in decline, and they need to nest in a broad, wide field, which, so we were hoping that we would get permission to.
All right. Mr. Grady.
I think a motion approved, then even approved three for the birdhouses, if you want.
Yes.
Awesome. I think it's a no-brainer.
Okay. So do we have any further discussion?
I do have a question.
So Diane.
Sorry.
Don't take away, don't take away the birdhouses.
Is it all fenced off, or do you anticipate this is kind of self-contained?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be fenced off. I mean, truthfully, some of these plants do spread, so it, in order to keep it to the site, the size that it is, it's just mowed the same way it's mowed, just means less to mow. But, yeah, it, it does not need a fence, it doesn't need anything. It will be attractive. The first summer that it's there, probably there will be a rain barrel somewhere that is collecting passive rain to, to lower the amount of water that we need to, to use, but we'll site it, camouflage it, so it's not unattractive, but no fencing. It'll just be a nice little meadow in, in another meadow.
Any other comments?
Second Paul's motion.
Second. Who's going to volunteer from the select board to water it?
I will.
Diane, we, we all have, that's a public record.
Cory's, Cory's host.
Yeah, we need to vote, we have a motion made and seconded to approve the pollinator garden in Wheelwright Farm and including birdhouse and reasonable signage. We've made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Is there anybody on Zoom or in the audience who wishes to speak to this?
No, Mr. Jack.
Thank you. Call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extention? Plant away.
Good luck.
By the way, thank you very much. And open space, thank you for bringing this to our attention. And now our audience is leaving us again. All right, moving forward. Location of Cove Road and Elm Street intersection, discussion and vote. Situation is, as we're doing the roads and sidewalks, there's been a lingering issue on what to do about Cove Road. The select board is the sole road commissioner by law to do anything to do with roads, and so Mr. Grady has suggested he wants to discuss this, is what we're going to do with, with Cove Road, if anything, and, and this is not, this is not to consider the whole roads and, and sidewalks throughout town. So anyway, I guess, Paul, do you want to lead that, or do you want?
I'm just here to answer your questions, but I.
Okay.
I can, I maybe give a little background. Ryan Joyce, Director of Public Works. There was a committee prior to my involvement that worked, reprimanded on the Elm Street corridor. Yeah, so this is on the, on the town website. If you look at the, the boards and committees website, and then at the master plan implementation committee, all of these attachments are at the bottom of that. So there are two options that were discussed, and the committee on June of last year came to vote and gave up alternative one, which was to keep parking on the south side of the street, increase it with a grass area that's continuous with the kind of lawns up there, and then remove parking on the north side. So that would shrink the size of the, of the street and get a little more green space. And part of that alternative one also included the Cove Road intersection. Scroll down, just in, I think the last page has Cove Road. And, and both alternatives had this, this somewhat, this type of configuration. If you look at the, the lines under the green space, as you can see the existing road, which is in the front of where the Cohasset Harbor Inn was, that's the existing road, and this is the alternative one design. So there's been a lot of discussion about how to configure Cove Road and the green space, keep it existing, move it closer toward the harbor, whatever. I guess I'm agnostic of what alternative it is. I'm just here to advocate for a decision of some sort, because the road is all part of it, and every 911 call, you have a million and a half dollars of capital equipment bouncing down the street of this bad road. Fire.
Paul?
What's the estimated cost of this? Just this, moving this island up against the, the, the new Cohasset Hospitality Partners Building?
So, so in June.
Just the island, not, not Elm Street as a whole?
Just the, so, so the estimate was for just the roadway was 848, change, sorry, 848,000, and with the island included was 1.4 million. So.
Six hundred thousand. Six hundred thousand dollars. And what's the benefit? It just looks nice.
Well, it's, again, I'm not an advocate for any.
No, I know, no, I'm asking.
It reconfigures the green space. Those who are proponents of it like the configuration as it, as it is next to development down. down there and the kind of the properties adjacent to it. Those who are opposed to it and don't like the turning situation with the new configuration. So I know there, there are, I think, proponents and objectors.
And we have two members.
There are the audience with Ralph Gores.
And we have two members of the Select Board, I think, want to speak, and then Paul?
No, 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 but I just wanted to say that's, so there's no safety benefits, there's nothing that's, that you see? There's been no accidents or anything like that, so we're changing a whole roadway? I, and I, again, I'm not calling you a proponent or an opponent.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I haven't heard of the chief, but I don't think it's a, it's a high accident area. You know, a good thing in a, in a best practice design for rehabbing roads of this size is a road diet, and that's what this does, so it reduces your long-term capital expenditure by reducing the area. So overall, the street end with this configuration reduces the whole area, so that, just by that, it's reducing.
That's on the main of Elm Street, that's on the main, that's on Elm Street as a whole, right? That's what we're talking about?
Predominantly, yeah. And a little higher as well. And the sidewalks, you know, the crosswalks are a little bit closer.
Okay.
Safety-wise, you have less of a lane to travel as a pedestrian.
Diane and then Cory.
Yeah, just, just a little bit of context. I wish we had invited the committee here because one of the things we did over, first of all, this was a priority established in the master plan, and one of the things we did do was immediately retain an outside firm to help us with community outreach so that we had maximum community input through over a year of, of public meetings. A lot of them were, and I, I mean, we were meeting probably once, once and a half on average a month, and had a ton of the residents working with us on this. And some of the, the initial concerns were, first of all, Elm Street had been dug up for a big water project, so we knew we were going to have to go in and, and take care of that, and it's still a mess, as you all know. We also had public safety represented by Chief Sylvia to talk about some of their concerns as having a public facility, a public safety facility on that street. So there was a lot of public input, and I, I wish it wasn't boiled down to this discussion tonight without having more people here to speak about it. But one of the things, a couple of the things that got us to this recommendation is a road diet all around, because in front of where Coacid Harbor Inn now, there's a lot of just people that just, and, and it happens at Pleasant Street and, and Depot Court, too, at the Art Center, where, you know, if, if a road is wide enough and it turns, people tend to just go, "Meow," around the corner. So there was some safety concerns in that general vicinity, and the road diet all around was important, as well as the access from the village to the harbor and, and that, you know, not on this slide, but on slides one and two, you see that that's, that was taken into consideration. With respect to this, one of the things that kind of got me on board with this particular design, and, you know, like, we can parse every design till, you know, till we do nothing, and we are very good at that, but one of the things that I liked about this was the Planning Board current chair, Tom Callahan, spoke very eloquently about the impact of that, of the new, of the new development in this area, which is really, if you drive by there now, you can see the concrete forms that are pretty much on the street. So it is going to be a jarring visual for, for residents in town. So one of the things we talked about was expanding some green space in there. It would, it would solve our kind of traffic in terms of cars, our pedestrian traffic, and it would kind of tone down that, that impact of those buildings being pretty much, you know, to me, it looks like they're on the lot line, but I'm not an expert in planning, that's for sure. So I just wanted to offer that context, like, you know, I do want to say, I think, I understand that we have to make decisions, yes or no, and, and move on from them, but at the same time, I want to let everybody know there was a year of significant input. Sometimes we had thirty people at our weekly meetings where the Elm Street Corridor Committee was there, as well as most of the neighbors in that vicinity weighing in on options. So I solicited by somebody from outside of town.
Cory and then Jean.
All right, three things, two questions and observations. So firstly, it looks like on these, back to the, the cost differences question, and yeah, I just did the math a little bit, so the cost difference is was, you know, about five hundred fifty thousand dollars. But for the lower cost estimate, it looks like basically a lot of the savings comes from the fact that the work stops where Summer Street ends. So I think a lot of the, when we're thinking about cost savings, what we're actually getting is cost savings because we were doing less linear feet, right? So, so we don't really have an A B of like, okay, what if we keep the intersection the way it is and refresh it with proper sidewalks and proper signage and proper pavement? We don't have that number, so we really can't do an A B comparison when it comes to this area because we don't have that data. Secondly, one thing I noticed was that a lot of the expense here is in utility hole relocation. Is there anything we can do about that? I mean, we're literally spending a quarter million dollars like moving the poles around.
Something else.
So, and I know that's kind of like, that may just be the devil's business, but like, that's a lot of money, and that's twenty-five percent of the cost of the whole project is moving poles around. Thoughts about that, and just from a, I know you, this is really, you weren't involved in all the whole steps here, but...
Yeah, no, I, I think, well, we talked about it recently, and I think as much as you can leverage existing infrastructure, not have to move it like catch basins or drainage or utility holes.
Right.
I think this is a benefit there. And in, in this alternative design, I have, I'm not sure, is it what the poles need to be moved, and can we reduce something maybe with the, or something? I don't know. Okay.
Okay, and third thing?
Yeah, the third thing is just that the observation is like, again, I think to tee off what Diane said, like, I know that a lot of work went into this to get to where we are. I would like, and I appreciate that Brian's here as an agnostic person, but I would love to hear from why this was the conclusion of that committee. I mean, we kind of danced around it for the last two years. I think before we make a call, we should have a, we should have the committee members come and tell us, Tom Callahan or whoever it is that designed this, why they chose this, what were their safety priorities? I know we heard from Elm Court, I know we heard from people that were going down the harbor. There's a lot of things that went into it, and I feel right now that I'm missing a lot of that information, so I really can't make a call about what to do with the next step without having that information concisely in front of me. Wasn't our packet, we don't have anybody here today. There's a lot that went into it, I think we should hear, that way we can make a better call.
Okay, Jean.
So I did watch the, here, the meeting of the Elm Street Working Group where they decided and recommended this design, and it looks like frankly there wasn't consensus at that point on this design either. But, so just to go into some of my considerations that I'm thinking through, cost and safety. So, and just to be clear, I don't think that we're, we're making any decisions about design and sidewalks and poles. It's really just, are we going to invest some money on moving Cove Road and redoing the island, or keep it as is and still try to do as much as we can within Elm Street as decided upon by the roads and sidewalks? Cory, as you may remember, we had that discussion when we were doing the charge on roads and sidewalks about what to do about Elm Street, and the Roads and Sidewalks Committee has appropriately come to us and say, you guys are the road commissioners, help us make a decision on this because this is a huge amount, this is a big thing. And so on the cost issue, we did apply for state grant, it was not approved. That money now is sitting in a line item in legislation that's pending, and that's only five hundred thousand dollars, just so everyone is clear on that as we look at these numbers. We know that Mr. Dormitzer has predicted, and I sense that once we do all the work, we'll find his prediction to be correct, that if we were to go through the entire town and try to upgrade sidewalks over time, we would want to spend three hundred thousand a year. So I would keep that number in mind as we look at the costs here. And again, I think ultimately our goal is to try to get something done on Elm Street and make it nice. This is about priorities. How are we going to prioritize the limited money that we have for all of the town? And so it's, it's the cash issue. And I think, and I've seen some confusion on Facebook where, and I just want to address this publicly because it's important, because I've read the Planning Board decision on this, too. To the extent that people think that the developer is paying for this, the answer is no. The developer agreed to pay ten thousand dollars to allow us to consider whether or not to move the road. We spent seventy-five thousand dollars on a study already in support of trying to figure out what to do with Elm Street, in part to help this development that's right up against the road. There is no money that is going. This will have to be taxpayer-funded entirely, including through a potential tax increase, to move this road. And so I, I wanted to point out the cost issues as, you'll hear my spiel on long-term financial planning, we, we have to start just being much more realistic. And on safety, and I'm sorry, Paul.
No.
I just got to get it out.
Get it out.
On safety, when this design first came out, I did ask Chris to inquire with Chief Sylvia about turning radiuses for fire engines, because as you look at that, or a bus, because my kids ride that school bus that goes right up through that tiny little road, to see, can you turn safely? And there is an open question on that point. And so my concern is that this moving the island, moving the road, really inhibits the safety issues. And I, I have talked with our current fire chief with respect to accessing those brand-new forty-to-forty-five FIP, forty, however high they are at the end of the day, those condominiums, and moving that road would make it harder for him to access those buildings at the end of the day, because the permit was granted on the premise that he would be able to use that road to back up against the fire truck up against those condos. And so if we're going to reopen everything, I think we have to reopen that because Chief Dockery was the guy sitting at all of those Planning Board hearings, opining on that. And even if it looks pretty, if it comes down to the safety of the, the residents in those really tall buildings, I, I would be almost ninety-nine percent dead set against moving a road that might compromise, you know, safety at the end of the day. And then the, the just last thing that I would say on resident input, I did talk to some of the residents, including folks that live directly across the street, they don't want the island moved because of the cost, or they don't care about moving the island. And I went to the American Legion and talked to them because they use this for the flags. They, the input I got from the people I talked to also didn't want the island cut in half because this is a place that they use for healing, you know, an extension of the healing field, and it's a memorial area right now as we speak. And I did that a few weeks ago, so I wanted to just provide some updates.
Paul, and then Diane.
Well, Jean's beating me to the punch on all that, but Jean's speaking to Chief Quigley and to Chief Dockery. Actually, what exists right now is it actually calms the traffic, you know, if you have a wider lane and turning radiuses for the fire vehicles. And just to set the record straight on what the Planning Board did, the Planning Board approved the building, they did not approve the surrounding area, because it's not in their purview. People thought that it was, and there was some pushback about that. The Planning Board is only able to approve the exact, the existing structure, nothing more than that, nothing on those green spaces. And I've talked to some of the same people that my colleague Jean has talked to, and it's the same result. Using that money, the money saved at taxpayer expense, again, it's Mr. Dormitzer, who's kindly volunteered to serve on this board, my thoughts on the, the roads and sidewalks, they should start off with a clean slate. We want to prioritize all of Coacid, Elm Street included, but all of Coacid, and it's picking where that money is meant to be spent, where we're going to get the next round of money, instead of just, you know, if it ain't broke, why are we trying to fix it? That's my thought with that. And again, with the people at the VFW, it is part of the healing field, they use it, it's utilized. There's been no accidents, am I incorrect in that, Chief?
I, I did pull the accident data from twenty-fifty, twenty-twenty-three thus far. The only accidents on Elm Street are really sort of in front of Flemings, it's single-car accidents, hot cars, mirrors off.
And Chief Dockery said basically the same thing, is about access to this, this new structure that's going up, and is it going to be overpowering? I understand Mr. Callahan's views on that and trying to offset it, but it is, basically, I hate to use the analogy, it is what it is. And...
Just, okay, just a point of clarification. It is the sole power of the Select Board to do anything to do with roads and sidewalks, and that's municipal law. I was actually at the M M A Municipal Association, and I sat through a whole thing on private ways just to confirm that. And so the question as to what was done before, it is the Select Board's thing, and the money that, I know some people have said, well, the state was going to pay for it, the state was going to consider giving some money to Coacid, but it was not to remove the island, it was not designated for the island, and as a matter of fact, that appropriation didn't survive the change of administrations. But that's just a fact. And Diane, and then I see Cory has...
Yeah, so that, so that appropriation's not pending any longer.
No. It might come, but it was never designated for just the Elm Street. It's for town stuff.
Correct.
But it's not for moving the island.
There was an Elm Street attachment, but, so...
I think it's hanging out there still.
Okay. I thought so as well. My, you know, thank you for, for updated information since the, you know, the committee, and, and I will say, Jean's right that there, you know, the island piece of this was something that we were all kind of, well, different people were agnostic, some people were against it, and, and what I will say is, I don't want to back down on the discussion of Elm Street, because we have bypassed, you know, we took it, they did the water project, and it's there to fix, and we've missed the opportunity for the Water Department to fix it. So something needs to happen with that road, and I want to push back a little bit on trying to change the priorities that have been identified by the town every time we decide we want to change the priorities of every, because we'll get nothing done. This came out of the master planning process. It wasn't because Elm Street was, you know, somebody's pet project, it was because it was in bad shape, it was having a water project. It literally connected our two economic engines, if you will, of the village and the, and the harbor, and we felt so, regardless of whatever decision is made about the island and re-changing the, the street, I, it would be absolutely wrong, I think, of us to not try to advance Elm Street.
Just to, Diane...
Sidewalks and the redoing of the, of the road.
Just a point of information, we are, I happen to be support of Elm Street, but the budget, the agenda item is very specific and purposely so, the location of Cove Road and Elm Street intersection. So we, this is not a discussion pro, con about Elm Street. I think everybody agrees we want to do that, but it's this one little thing that's been holding up everything, and the thought was it's time for the Select Board to make a decision. And I see your hand up, Paul, and, but Cory was first, so Cory and then Paul.
Can you, do you have a topic with your Chris, Brian and Chris? We got money from Water Commission, and we, have we already allocated Chapter Ninety? So just, in the context, what is this dollar figure? I think Jean brought up how we pay for it, which is always the, the big thing. What's the delta here? What options do we have? I mean, I, you know, to Jack's point, you know, we are having really three conversations at the same time, that's why this is confusing, right? There's a disagreement about the, the thing, I don't really know, I think we're all just kind of being amorphous about it, but that's one question, how do we deal with the Cove intersection? But then the separate conversation, which is should we fix this road and the sidewalks that are there now forward, because, or should we wait for another couple of years? And then the third question is, well, if we even want to fix this, how will we pay for it? So the question that I have for Brian and Chris is, what is our funding status now? If we, if this board voted, you know what, let's just fix it, let's leave it the way it is, if we, I don't want to say punt it, but if we just said we want to fix it, what would that mean? What do we have in the kitty for that?
That's a good question. So right now, we're, we have a, we have a town meeting article for a road funding appropriation.
Yeah.
We do have some funding left in... We do have some funding left in road funding accounts from previous years. But it all hinges on our MAPC consortium contract. So we pulled together our quantities with 11 other communities to get better purchasing power. That bid has been delayed first of year to February 1st. Now it's September 2nd. So based on those bid amounts and bid opening, that will establish our bidding loss for next year. It's going to be a one-year contract this year. It's typically a two-year. So we won't know until probably we get re-estimated road costs, say mid-March, on what our actual budget figure will be for our roads that we have for this year. Elm Street's on the list. The one thing that we need to do is make a decision on what the configuration is so we know what the price is.
Right.
So I guess...
And do we get money from Water though for this? I thought we got...
No.
Okay.
So it's all...
I misunderstood.
Back to what we actually have on the agenda is very purposely doesn't have all of that. It's just to the location of Cove Road to make that decision one way or the other now and not go forever discussing Elm Street. I think there's a consensus that Elm Street needs to be done, along with a lot of other roads. But Paul?
So, yeah, tonight is just about the island. And basically, you know, I don't, you have a paving schedule coming up. And paving schedules can rearrange as things go. Elm Street is not being knocked off the table. But the sidewalks committee, with the group that started, you know, and being charged, they should be able to start with a clean slate to look out. They don't have to worry about the politics of an island or something like that or someone's views. What they're going to do is prioritize roads, work hand-in glove with you guys and us and finance. And we're just going to try to get as many things done as we can within budgetary constraints and then move on to the next year. Their job is to get in, get it done, and get it done fast. Really, it's not going to be one of these terminal committees that goes on forever and ever. But tonight's focus is just on the island. So they get out, they look at Elm Street. Okay, I'm standing on the island. We know the island's staying or the island is gone. That's what tonight's about. And I think that's a fair assessment. And I think it's a fair thing to do to make to a new committee that's being made up of volunteers again. And so we can put the island either to bed or...
Yeah, Diane, and then I see are people in the audience or on Zoom who want to speak to this?
I just want to put a plug in for the committee because we still have some slots to fill. So we need to get that committee underway sooner rather than later.
That they start, that they know the starting date.
Okay, Jean.
So Jack, I'm prepared to make a motion unless there's anyone else.
I see some three people in the audience who wish to speak. But you can make your motion and second it.
No, I'm happy to let...
But during the discussion, they can discuss anyway. But anyway, but...
I would make a motion to leave Cove Road or margin extension and the island configuration as is.
We have a motion made seconded to leave Cove Road as is. In discussion period is their discussion. And I see, do I see people who wish to speak to that?
I appreciate the discussion. I am Kari Ashram, co-chair of the Open Space Recreation Committee. And as such, I'm also the liaison person for the Elm Street Working Group. And I've asked him to keep me in the loop of what's going on. And really, if it weren't for tonight, coming on behalf of Open Space with Pollinator Garden, I did not even know that this vote was going to be happening tonight about the Cove Road. So I'm very glad that I'm here. Speaking personally, as a citizen, I am very much in favor of keeping that in areas. I spend a lot of time down there. I used to live on Summer Street. I've lived in town for 35 years. I'm familiar with the traffic patterns. I follow the issue, and I haven't seen the need. At one point, they were trying to, you know, different stop signs slowing the traffic and all sorts of things around that area. I haven't seen the need for that. And frankly, from the beginning, in my mind, as a citizen, putting the island, giving the development a fright yard, that I sort of felt like was, that's part of it. And it's not the development's fright yard. That's part of my town's parts. Just seemed, didn't seem, never struck me as the right thing to do. And as you see now, the building's coming up so close to the... And that's honestly, very being honest about that motivation that they want some buffer because they've built to the edges. As a citizen, I'm not a...
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we do have somebody on Zoom who would like to speak, just so you know.
Okay, let's let them know that we're, people in the audience will speak and then they'll speak. Ralph.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to this. I'm a very...
By the way, we don't allow citizens to speak. This is your town, speak.
Oh, that's so nice to hear.
It's up for you, Ralph.
Let me just say that by your decision, you do free up the opportunity for us to really talk about Elm Street. And that's why this is important to me. I think it's important to me. Like, because we're cohorts and trying to figure out how we could possibly do something that would enhance Elm... And I know you don't want me to talk about Elm Street, but we're trying to figure out what we could do to enhance Elm Street. And also take all of the comments that we've heard from you, Diane and others, about what to do and how to satisfy people. We really care about this. So we're trying our darndest to do something about it. I only want to follow just two quotes because I think this is germane to the whole thing. And these are things that go back some time, one of which comes right out of the history of Cohasset. And the first one is, it says, as we watched helplessly, Frank Hagerby wrote in January of 1974, Elm Street was light, property fundages taken, Elm's cut, and Grant Currie installed. How could this have happened? Okay, that was Fran. And that was only a matter of months after it happened. This was a 1973 event. We're at the 50th anniversary, believe it or not, of the widening of that road in 1973. Another interesting historical perspective. This is a good year to do this. The second one is another quote, which is, formerly shaded by elm trees, rising from long broad ribbon of lawn, Elm Street once had beauty and charm. In 1973, however, the Cohasset Select Board, it was Select at that time, ordered Elm Street widened and improved. Quote, "Trees cut down and property fundage taken. Elm Street lost its charm." And that's all, that's mostly the only things I want to say. And so we're just here to say, we're trying to do something. Thank God for people like Mike, who is really terrific in these kinds of designs. I'm serious. And we will try to do our best as part of the committee to produce a design that most people will be happy with. All we want to do is share with you guys.
I just want to say...
Mike, do you want to, I don't know. Mike, did you want to speak or? Okay.
No, I just want to say that I think that second quote was, we talked a lot about that quote because we took it very seriously that, you know, this was in addition to a access conversation that it really was to try to beautify the street and return it a little more to what it was. Cove, not with, like, that's just, that was a secondary discussion and on that. But, you know, again, I'll say it. I think we cannot ignore Elm Street. I think it is a priority, it was identified as a priority in the master plan. It was, it's been talked about as a priority for years and years. And it is heavily trafficked, both by pedestrians and cars, so.
Okay, thank you, Diane. We have somebody on Zoom?
We do. Mr. Sylvia.
Good evening to the board. Robert Sylvia, 65, Forest Ave. Former member of the Elm Street Working Group. Couple of quick points that I wanted to make. One of them is from the public safety standpoint. You spoke about public safety. Public safety, I was a representative on that committee, representing public safety. One of the things that we brought up was the speed the people travel and how can we reconfigure the area of Elm Street in the area of the triangle to slow people down? This is something that we worked on at length. The version that you have up right now is part of that. One of the issues is that, and I would quote my friend Chief Quigley, the so-called on-ramp onto Elm Street, where people come from Situate, pass the island, don't even think about the stop sign and keep right on rolling. If you spend any time down there, you see it constantly. So that one-way shoot, I'll call it, was to slow people coming onto Elm Street from the harbor itself. So that was part of it. So this is something that we talked about at length, was public safety. How can we make the road safer? The other point I wanted to make very quickly is as Selectman Kennedy has mentioned, you had a group that met at length and discussed all of these different pieces. And the residents were a big part of this. And I do believe that our final recommendation was what you have in front of you now. And that was also being pushed by the residents in that area because they also understand that it is a safety issue. So please don't discount the safety issue. Everything we did or everything I was involved with with that committee was simply to try and make it a safer area for everyone involved, whether they be pedestrian, cyclists, or motorists. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to hear from you. And by the way, things have changed already. Selectman Kennedy is now a member of the Select Board Kennedy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I picked up on that.
Get it straight.
Get it straight, Paul. Nice to hear from you again.
Jack, we have a second motion.
Well, I know, but we were going, discussion is still going on.
We got, we got one more.
Okay.
When you're ready.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then Cory, and then...
We've got a comment from Tom Callahan. I do not, I'll just read it out loud.
Yeah.
"I do not wish to be promoted. I am on record with my views on this and the PB's decision regarding the intersection. The impact of the adjacent project does not appear fully appreciated, nor is the PB's decision appreciated or respected. The PB is being criticized for not addressing impacts of village development we cannot as we don't have the bylaw to allow. Here we did address impact, and now we are told it's not our bailiwick, bailiwick problem. And blame somewhat for parking issues tonight. Not fair, period. And thank you, Diane, for your comments, period."
Cory, and that's...
I just, we've heard from a couple of members of the committee. To me, if I'm going to make a decision, I'm going to follow the recommendations of the planning board and the committee that studied this. Personally, don't really care. You know, one thing I like is that I can get to the grassy section. I should run it down there all the time. Me running north, I can get to a grassy section without having to cross the crazy intersection. So I like it, fine. But again, I don't really care. I just, me, this is process and there's reasons we got here. So to me, I defer to the people that studied this. It's just as town built.
Thank you. I have sent some impatience on the board to bring this to a vote. Is there any further discussion? Justin, is there any? Hearing no further discussion. All those, how was he, how did you phrase that?
To keep the island as is, i.e. not relocate or move.
To keep the island...
Slash margin street extension.
As is, so I means no change, to keep it as it is. Okay? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Two nays. The ayes have it. We will keep that as it is. And I just want to reiterate what should be very clear to everybody. This is about Cove Road, it's not about Elm Street. I think the people who voted for very clear that there's a recognition that Elm, that Elm Street needs to be dealt with. So, and I think you've seen that the Select Board is going to support that. Moving forward, Long Term Finance Committee discussion, recharge and appointments.
Thanks, Brian. Why don't you take a recess?
Yeah, I'm going to call a three-minute recess.
Hey, Justin, would you mind putting up the presentation for financial planning, please? Thank you.
This is the split back, the one you did put forward. I put the hours in, just make sure it's clear.
Oh, okay.
For three-minute recess or leave it unmuted?
No, we're still open, so it's still...
It can be open.
You're going to recess, why don't you mute on? What's up? You mute on?
Just know there's a hot mic.
I... You're not, you're not, you're not recessed.
Good.
When C. Sp...
I'm declaring the recess over. I see we're intent in conversation.
Yes.
I mean, if you need extra time.
No, I'm good.
Look, I stood up for you.
Yeah, I know. I gotta be in Cambridge at 8:00 a.m., so let's keep going.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, moving forward, the Cohasset Final Financial Planning Committee charge. I will read what is proposed, and then I think since Jean is on that, I'll let her speak to this. The proposed.
Uh, Jack, if you want me to, we're not gonna do that yet on the charge. If you want me to sort of launch into the presentation that I have, Justin, would you mind putting up the PowerPoint?
No, do you want to do, you don't want to do the charge tonight?
No, no, Diane and I will. You asked for an update, so we're gonna spend our time working through the update.
So I don't, I don't have that PowerPoint?
Oh.
So I'd be happy to have.
Okay, it's in the packet. Let me see.
Financial present, it's a aye, or aye one.
Let me see if I can share it real quick here, Justin.
Aye.
Look at the packet link.
Okay, just send it to you.
I can share the packet.
No, I, I stepped up.
Have it now?
It's on the website.
No, this is the packet.
No, the packet in the, in the window.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, in the interest of time, I'll just get started. So, so Diane and I are the Select Board liaisons to the Financial Planning Committee. And just by way of background, we have had some multiple meetings with the bigger group, with a smaller, non-quorum group to meet with Jennifer. And right now, we're really in the phase of trying to dig into the details, projections, and research, in part to help inform what changes, if any, should be made to the charge. And so we want to come back and update at the end of February slash early March. And if you could see the slides, that's what the second slide would say. So what we really wanted to get into more was the substantive update, because I know people are really interested in that. And specifically, just to run through real quick, the group has been identifying pretty repeatedly throughout our meetings, multiple needs that we have in different spaces. So specifically, we know that we've got multiple generational projects on the horizon. And the, and everyone knows what we're talking about. We're talking about everyone here. We're talking about town hall, school, whether it's renovation or rebuild, same with the public safety building, our police and fire station. This is foreseeable over the next 10 years. We're gonna have to do some significant work to address that. Potentially a facilities building that we've talked about with Chris Senior. Fields and Rec, we know that there's work that's outstanding there, where we're trying to narrow down and identify the specific needs. Sidewalks and roads, to a lesser degree, you know, we've just heard some of the grappling that we're dealing with on that front. Likewise, we're still trying to get a full understanding of our sewer and water costs, as we know, we've had some recent sewer costs. But, but longer term, trying to get a sense of our water costs. And then also resiliency costs as well, including as to our harbor and electric grid, as the Select Board knows. Earlier last year, we were trying to contemplate a microgrid, which was a significant expenditure, but that's one example of a resiliency line item that was out there, that we didn't unfortunately get funding for. But there are some significant big picture costs that are out there. We also know that we have a 10-year capital plan that identifies many specific needs over the next 10 years. This year, for example, there are $5 to $7 million in requests for a capital stabilization fund that should be funded up to $2 million. We also know that in that list of projects that we, that I was just talking about, that there are likely to be costs that are throughout those projects, like, for example, Fields and Rec, that may be smaller costs spread out over time. And so, again, we're trying to line up all of the needs, and the group has been identifying the needs. We've been also working with the schools to identify capital needs as well. So, for example, I know the School Facilities Committee right now is going through and looking at that AI3 assessment that they had commissioned earlier, and they are going through and trying to create a renovation slash capital plan over the next set of years to not only address the middle high school, but also the other facilities that are identified and those needs and those facilities. So there's ongoing work happening in the background to try to better understand. Now, we can't fully predict the future, but we're trying to put things on the table that are reasonably foreseeable, even if they're not fully vetted or fully understood, just so we can have the big picture as well as much as the small picture. So that's capital needs on the operating side. Jennifer just gave a really great summary, I think, of the operating side. But as we look forward, we're not necessarily seeing any foreseeable large expansion of town services, although obviously we're keeping an eye on inflation as it drives up costs and salaries. As we know, we have been using non-recurring funds to address certain operating expenses, such as ARPA funds, free cash, grants. For example, we hired a shared resiliency staff with Hingham. On the school side, we could foresee, and we're still working with the schools to figure out exactly what we're talking about, but that there could be some potential expansion of school operating services and, and line items to enhance academic performance. As we know, the schools are still grappling with the pandemic fallout and need to address learning gaps, such as in math. So that's under discussion, including in the current context of our ongoing budget for this year. Like the town, the schools have also used grant money from the pandemic to hire personnel, so that's a consideration that's out there. So next steps wise, the town and school staff are trying to pull together five-year budget projections, and we think that there's also a need for us to continue to kick the tires on some of these bigger picture projects, like, for example, Fields and Rec, trying to help get some more clarity on that. We know roads and sidewalks is out there. And so, you know, what you all come up with is gonna help inform the longer term financial planning. But before I go on to the next slide, Diane, did you want to add anything on the, the needs? I'll go on.
Just, just a couple of quick things. I keep, I'm writing notes after, you know, we've discussed all of this. But like, one of the things, I, I'm a visual learner, so I keep thinking that we're gonna see some, we need to look at this layered. And you mentioned the, the microgrid, for example. And there's a lot of projects that come up, and they become, they're a priority at the time, like Elm Street with the master plan. And just because you don't get funding, or you don't have funding, they shouldn't, if, if they're real needs, they shouldn't die because you don't have the funding. We need to do a better job kind of figuring out all the different funding mechanisms so that we keep this list and we check it off, especially some of the projects that are sort of outside of annual operating. So that's that. The other thing, just with respect to water and sewer, that while they're enterprise funds, and a lot of it might come from their own retained earnings or their own revenue generation, from the resident perspective, if they're gonna get hit with a big charge because we're doing X, you know, we have to do a big water project or a big sewer project, and they're paying it that way, they're gonna feel it. So then we need to understand what that kind of matrix is of potential expenses, so that we can do our job right by, you know, presenting them with what the options are for other things. So we have to understand the whole kind of complexion of the town, because it's all coming out of the same people's pockets.
So Justin, if you don't mind advancing to the next slide. So along with identifying the needs, we're also looking at ways to pay. And so, starting with, for example, debt exclusion, we've been looking into the realities surrounding debt exclusions, including, for example, at a certain point, there's only so many debt exclusions that we can do before we jeopardize the AAA rating. So what is that? What's the town's realistic capacity from that standpoint? Also looking at if we layer debt exclusions on top of each other, let's say hypothetically, one for town hall, one for roads and sidewalks, you know, when you try to layer those on top, what does that look like from the impact to the taxpayer? We've been, and Jennifer has done some initial projections on that and graphs, but we're continuing to work with her through that. We know that there's a lot of debt exclusion calculators out there. The Department of Revenue from Massachusetts has one. We know, for example, based on Jennifer's research, that if we incur an extra $3 million in debt in the first year, as it rolls off over 30 years, that that means for that $3 million in additional tax debt that we're asking our taxpayers to pay for, we can do $42 million in projects. And so then the question is, well, how much will that hit people's pocketbooks for that $3 million in taxes? And you can do tax, tax calculators in order to figure that out. So for example, in Cohasset, when you plug that into the Department of Revenue calculator, which is general, so like, don't live and die by these numbers. But in that example, for a house that's assessed at $1.2 million, the tax bill would go up by $974 for $42 million worth of projects. So again, just trying to figure out, as we look at the future and what it might hold, to the extent that we move in those directions, what does that mean? Equally important is the question of, well, not everything's obviously gonna be a debt exclusion, nor can it be, nor should it be. And so how do we fund our ongoing capital and operations demands? We know we have a capital crunch in this town. The group has repeatedly discussed issues with the capital stabilization fund being less than it should be for various reasons. We also know prices are increasing, even though our capital stabilization fund is holding constant. And so we've been looking at our, our capital approach from that standpoint. And then I think the third, the third, and, and the options that may exist. The third big category, and Jennifer went through some of this, is all sources of revenue and user fu, and funds. So in addition to that which is in the budget, we also have other non-recurring sources of revenue, for example, ARPA funds, CPC, user fees, reserve funds. We have town assets, such as property sitting on the books. Really trying to look at our ability to leverage some of these funds as we grapple with some of these long-deferred questions and answers and maintenance. And so the immediate next steps are going forward, we are asking Chris and Jennifer to work with us to continue to do that research on debt exclusions, including figuring out things like our debt capacity, proposing recommendations on a debt exclusion schedule, pulling data from peer communities so we can make informed choices, looking at other funding sources, projecting new funding sources, so new growth, that's something I asked Jennifer about. What sort of new growth do we think we have over the next five to 10 years? And how does that pair against the projections of our increasing operation budgets, to try to figure that out? And then last but not least, trying to figure out new revenue sources. You know, there are other towns that have other approaches, and also looking at their approaches as well. Hingham has done a pretty extensive analysis of new revenue sources that we'll probably start with. But as Jennifer alluded to, there's other things happening out there, like the millionaire's tax. And so, again, we're just trying to look at the big picture, both in terms of what's eating the pie, what's in the pie, and how can we grow the pie? And so that's sort of where we're landing. And there's still work to be done, I think, before we narrow the charge. And so Diane and I are gonna try to work with Chris and Jennifer over the next few weeks, and then provide you all with an update, with probably an updated charge maybe at that point, depending on where the research goes. And so that's, that's what our update is right now. And we think that's the most efficient way to proceed.
Thank you, Jean. Are there any comments from the Select Board?
I just think they've done a fantastic job.
Yeah, I think it's very good. And this is a very, very important initiative for those people at home who are still listening.
I have one question, Jean. Taxpayers, you talk about them. Now, they can be, maybe they could help by way of prioritizing. They're gonna be paying the taxes, we're all gonna be paying the taxes for the increases. Where do they see their money being? Is it in the new town hall? Is it new schools? Roads and sidewalks?
So.
So that's all, that's, I'm just wondering.
Diane.
No, I was just gonna say, that's, that's why we're here, too, to facilitate that very, that very conversation. And that's why we want the numbers.
Well, and as we talked about the last Financial Planning Committee, half of this is just education for voters to make informed decisions. And the other half is recommendations to help inform policies and procedures, some of which may be outreach. But I do think ultimately, it's incumbent on us, the Select Board, to make the hard choices, including by doing outreach to the voters and, you know, pushing forward on the political process to help figure out those questions.
Diane?
Yeah, and make, and making sure we get to decision points. And so I think with this committee and the work that they've been doing, and the input's been significant, but now it's like, this work needs to take place. A lot of this work, as, as Jean alluded to, is really Jennifer and Chris and the financial team internally to, to pull data, kind of outlay, you know, I keep saying, this matrix of, of information. And then we can start looking at it and talking about it. Like, do we need to revisit and recommend policies? Okay, then we'll take this committee in that direction, or what's next? So right now, it's really just kind of hunting and gathering internally, and then we'll come back to the board and say, this is what we think is gonna be next steps. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that that's the whole idea of this, for the town to take a long-term look and balance all of our needs. And first of all, we need that information, and this is what the long-term is doing. And I, and I certainly think we're doing very well in getting to where we want to be. And thank you, Jean and Diane, for your work on that. It's impressive, Selectman Kennedy.
Select Board member.
I couldn't resist.
Please, don't.
All right. Is there any other discussion on this? Okay, Norfolk County Retirement Cost of Living Adjustment. I trust everybody saw the emails that were sent out on that. Is there any discussion on that?
Is there a vote or anything?
Well, we need to vote, but I think we need to vote to accept their living adjustment.
The board, if it so chooses, which I would recommend you consider, would be to increase the COLA by an additional 2%. It's not gonna affect the town, but it will give retirees a little extra money. The state authorizes this expansion, and it won't, kind of not affect our costs.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept it, or we do the 2% COLA increase that the state ultimately gonna pay for through the state.
Okay, we've had a motion made in second to approve the 2% increase in the COLA, as provided for in the Norfolk County projections. Is there any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, annual town reading, draft warrant review. Chris?
This is the very first beginning. I know that Select Member Grady wanted me to go for a full hour on this, but I promised we'll only do a couple of minutes. So at the moment, we're looking at a 29 article warrant. I know it's still a little early, but it's a starting point. Nine of those are zoning articles that are being held for the time day. We'll see how that develops. So that'll be, which you probably won't be seeing those in a, in a formal way until March, because that's through the process. And then the first, you know, the first, well, you've heard preliminarily, the operating budget. What'll happen next is we're gonna start doing deep dives of the advisory committee and the, and the police and fire, and all that. I, I don't know about supplemental appropriations yet, or we will make our regular contribution civilization. Other things that are kind of maybe a little different, just a quick look. Article 13 kind of is expanding the South Shore Vocational School to include Marshfield. They want to become a member, and that, and that would allow them to become a member. And then there's, you know, obviously there's just placeholders for the time day for some of the major capital projects that may or may not continue, but they're here, so people can see them. What's on here is a sewer system plant upgrades. We may need to do some, some work on that, based on the challenges of the plant. Looking at possible next steps on the Public Safety Communication Tower, so we'll see what that turns into. Veterans Valor Act, that would add an ability to do veterans' workhouse. We'll talk more about that as that proceeds. And conservation is still here, do some, maybe stormwater bylaw tweaks. They don't have the details yet, but that's there. So the board meets again in three weeks. I would like to start putting something in front of me, at least put on the warrant, even if we don't have the final details yet. Is there any, are there any of these that jump out at you besides the zones, which you can't touch yet, that you want to take up on the 28s, and I can be ready for them? Town Hall Building Committee, are you ready? They gave us a three-week window two weeks ago, and our next week is two weeks out. I mean, that's, that's something which we promised the voters we would bring to them and let them vote on, you know, go one way or another. So that one just seems like a shoo-in to, to do.
Yeah, I, I think I agree with Cory and Diane.
Um, yeah, and I don't know anything about the Veterans Valor Act, so I'd love to hear from that, if that's pretty straightforward, which sounds like it might.
As I recall, that's, that allows veterans to work off a port. As I recall, that allows veterans to work off a portion of their property tax.
That's the work-off program?
Yes, ex-workoff. I already did the Brave Act, which would be...
Right. I mean, is that ready for primetime presentation?
Yeah. Yeah, I drafted a version of it and asked that Kiki review. It's just like the one that Hingham... Well, this is one of those towns, and they have a whole program set up, and so we're waiting to hear from the assessor and the collector on...
And tax.
...from the holidays. Asked for it to be done last year as well. Decent mix on that.
If you... I could get the vote tech folks, if you want to hear about that.
The other one, obviously, is for me is Fields and Courts. We've talked to... And that's... That has changed and rotated. It's like in a Tumblr dryer cycle right now. So this is like a whole different set of stuff, and that's part of a bunch of it. Sounds great, but I just... It'd be good if we got on the same page and put town on the same page to see what...
Yeah, maybe, you know, even if things aren't fully ready for primetime, like, there's a lot of things on here. Yeah, the 911 communication tower, I don't know anything about. So the sooner we tee it up to us, then it's out in the community, and even if we're not ready to make decisions, it would be great to get read into what's going on.
There may be some capital projects, I think we should probably socialize. We probably socialize with all of you, which we try to do every year anyway, the whole capital plans, you know it.
Yes.
The first time you hear about it is not at the end of the process. Okay, that should start you off, I think, pretty well.
When's our debt exclusion deadline? When do we have to make a decision for what we put on the ballot? Isn't it like 60 days in advance of the election?
I want to say it was 45.
Okay. Oh, maybe 45 is... Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
I have to double-check that.
Okay.
I want to say it's the very beginning of April, I think.
Okay.
Or the very end of March.
Isn't it really quick? Because the last time we did town hall, oh, it was a regular elec... Well, yeah, it was a regular election day. I can't remember.
We gotta have the discussion about if, when we want to, if we want to do it with the election ballot or a separate ballot.
Right.
I mean, that's really what we're... We have to make that call.
For the debt exclusion?
Because there's plus and minuses. I mean, like, fails a town meeting, then the ballot doesn't matter.
Right.
Right? So I'm just, you know, we can make that call. That frees us up a little bit. I do see that, obviously, you're making people go back. I don't love that either, so.
I think if we could, at all possible, have the votes at the same time, we should do that. We don't know the answer to that, but I think that's a preference. Does everybody agree that that's a preference to have an election, if possible?
There is no general election in Cohasset in fall either. There's nothing in November.
Right.
There are other communities that have elections that are cities and stuff, but there's no general.
So we should try to do it.
Next, the fiscal election wouldn't take place again until the spring. Well, one of the... I guess the presidential primaries will start happening, so you'd have the presidential primaries whenever those are...
Well, we should put on the agenda for the next meeting and have a discussion that's fully informed, including with the dates on the debt exclusions.
Yeah.
Yeah, what actually...
So I was actually going to say, one substantive conversation we can have is to drill down on the town meeting schedule, but actually find out one of the things when Leonore Jenkins was speaking earlier, I was like, you know, when, you know, when will their budget be ready, and when would they be coming before us to discuss these kinds of things? So if that's needed, so kind of drill into, here's when you're going to see the school budget, here's when, you know, we need to make a decision about an election.
One question, we have a question from the member of the audience when you're ready.
Sure.
Question from Tom Callahan. For your warrant discussion later, number of zoning articles looks like six, with one having a two-part vote. Good night.
Okay. All right. So it's... One is only 27 articles then, so let's just say we're going to leave that. That's why it's...
Oh, good, we dropped two.
That's true.
And this is always something that pops up too. The first, again, the first dozens are just kind of common every year. That said, it sounds like CPC is still meeting, right? There's still a lot of conversation.
Okay.
So that's any...
So we have some things we want to see on the agenda.
I have town hall, Valor Act, South Shore Votech update, Fields and Courts. Is there a public meeting coming up? I think there is, right?
Michelle was getting group stakeholders together tomorrow to begin socializing, but I don't think she posted anything publicly.
And I want to enter capital pressure for the debt exclusion process.
Paying funding.
Okay.
Paying funding.
Okay. That's...
No, we don't have to discuss it, but we... I don't want you to forget to fund Cohasset TV.
It's automatic.
Well, it wasn't automatic last time. I had to mention it.
I promise.
Okay, I just, you know...
But that's the... Any questions on me at this point, or is that...
No.
We're going to be in a five-week sprint in March, so just...
I understand that. Approval of minutes, 1:24.
Some of... I have one correction, or two corrections. So Diane's name needs a Y on page...
Diane Kenned?
Yeah.
Kenned? Oh, I didn't even pick that up.
Yeah. And the town, the town hall building committee said they would have a cost, including a renovation estimate, so we should add rebuild and renovation estimates.
Okay, we have a motion made as her second.
Second, with those edits.
Okay. Made in second, any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Extension motion carries unanimously. Town manager update?
I'll make this brief.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I just want to thank all the staff and everyone in town who worked over the weekend to deal with the cold, and it was a short but very hard-hitting cold snap. The facilities team did a great job of proactively doing the things, and then they reacted. We dealt with a lot of things too. There was unexpected heat failure at the police station, and it's a couple of pipes that Osgood freeze, but thankfully they're able to minimize damage and get things back working. Some windows we need to replace, and the library oddly enough. So, but again, I want to thank them for all the work they've done, and all of the police and fire ran around a lot. There were... On Saturday, Sunday in particular, as everything thawed, frozen pipes, the ceiling suddenly became a problem, particularly commercial buildings where... To Udi, the workstation, and a number of other properties, so... But they ran around. Fortunately, nobody was hurt. There wasn't a fire. Fortunately, nobody was hurt either, so there was a little bit of everything on Saturday, and thank you, police, fires, facilities, and everyone who worked through that, and hopefully the rest of the winter, like the groundhog says, will be right around the corner spring. That's it.
Okay, select board comments. We'll start with Cory, and we'll go now.
In the interest of 10 o'clock? Nothing. Thank you.
Diane?
Nothing. I'm just going to say it because I'm not sure I'm going to have a chance to before February 28th publicly. I know Lauren Lind is going to move on to another position. She has been an incredible asset for our town, just really, we've been very lucky to have her, and so I wanted to publicly thank her and commend her for her service and wish her luck in your new job.
Paul?
I'll second the wish your luck on Lauren and else we're sailing.
Yep, I would...
Nothing else to add.
I would third. Lauren, we're going to miss you. Good luck in your new venture. All right, are there any topics not reasonably anticipated? Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Had a motion to adjourn made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Extension motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.